And board members?
Um.
And that's two. Anybody opposed? No. Okay, that's two zero five zero. Okay.
Great. Thank you Director Tucker and the school board. We would like to bring in our wrestlers from Islander Middle School to come on in. So I know not the entire team was able to come on.
Come on in.
Um, we may not have the entire team, but I am proud to bring for the board tonight. Um, back to back. Triangle League Champions, our Islander Middle School, we participated in a league with Snowwolme Valley and River View School District. And so we're one of, uh, one of the schools in there. And for the second year in a row, our Islander Middle School Wrestling Team brought home the championship. Seven individual champions out of nineteen weight classes were from our Islander Middle School team. Twenty-two individuals on the team finished first, second, third, or fourth. And we had seventeen of our nineteen weight classes represented across the board. And sometimes it's hard to find wrestlers for every weight class, and that can be really challenging. Um, and that takes a lot of work by our coaches, certainly, but then all of the hard work by our student athletes. So we missed your team last year, being able to recognize you, but when we saw you come through this year, um, we felt that we had to get you in front of the school board to really honor the hard work that goes into being a student athlete, especially in middle school, as you're balancing a lot of different priorities moving forward. So I'm going to turn it over to our athletic coordinator and director down at the middle school, Mr. Stephen Rennie, maybe to say a few other things, turn it over to coaches, and we'll hear from the athletes.
Absolutely. Thanks, Dr. Rendell. I'm Stephen Rennie. I'm the Athletic Director at the Middle School and really proud of these guys. Um, and they're kind of a representative sampling of some of our athletes who balance, as Dr. Rendell was saying, all the things that they've got to do at the school, with their home environment, with all the work they put in. And credit is really due to them and also to our credible coaching staff. That's Coach Ryan and Coach Luix, and we'll let Coach Ryan say something.
Yeah, it's my pleasure. I love being a wrestling coach. I've been here for close twenty years now and just love, this is one of my favorite things I do all year long, talk about it all the time, just have a great staff, great help. And these are great representatives of what we've accomplished, of seeing them grow. We've got two of our captains, our Declan, and then two of our future, three of our future captains here. We got, uh, so Duke, Riley, and Ronan. And so these are some leaders, returning wrestlers, and just, you know, not really great wrestlers, but great students, great humans, and a great role model to their community. So I'm really proud of watching them grow and become better wrestlers.
Yeah, do you guys want to introduce yourselves and maybe say something about kind of what wrestling means to you?
Sure. Um, I'm Arabunismen, and been wrestling since sixth grade when I was pretty unaware of all the possibilities. In seventh grade, I became, um, a champion, then an eighth, and now team captain. And it's just pretty great that I got the chance to do this.
Yeah, great.
Uh, I'm Duke Kyle. I don't really have much to say. I ended up wrestling was up when I was in the sixth grade, and after that, I just kind of excelled on my feet.
Oh, yeah, pretty much so.
Yeah. I'm Riley Han, pretty much the same as Duke. I just happen to think it was something fun, but I'm kind of planning to do it in tonight's school too, so.
I'm Declan Smith-Coker, open three wrestling, twenty twenty-four Triangle League Champion. Uh, wrestling is important to me because it's brought me discipline in my life, and it's also taught me a lot of life lessons.
I'm Ronan McCarthy. I started wrestling last year, and I just like all the coaches and everyone on the team.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think it's important, um, as I was talking to Principal Budges and the leadership team, um, about these individuals. I think what also stands out is it's not just about, um, the victories and, and the successes, but also, um, really the chemistry and how you've represented Islander Middle School, um, especially in victory. And it can be easy to forget about who you've competed against. And I was able to hear some stories, and I think it's reflective of our coaches, um, about the, the sportsmanship and the way that you carry yourself without, throughout the league. So I want to commend you on that as well. So please join me in a round of applause for all. So we have to come right around the backside of the board. The board will kind of come in, and we're going to take a picture with.
I know, you never have to.
Okay, so parents, I'm going to take a photo, and then I'll turn it over to the parents who want to take a photo. We're all looking at that one camera. In a little warm space. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Ready this. Are we all good? Um, next recognition is actually to the seven of you. Uh, and January is School Board Recognition Month. And I know that many of you, um, were probably maybe told that it's only a few hours a week or a month, um, when, uh, when you're thinking about this, and then you get into it, you realize that it is much more than that. And some months are maybe less commitment than others, but overall, um, it's not just the nights where you're here. And while we're here for periods of time, what people don't realize, um, are all the emails that you're working, all the conversations, the events that you attend, um, the committees that you're on, uh, and really trying to balance both being parents, that, um, all of you are, and for our students, being students, um, as well as being board members. And that can be a tremendous challenge. And I just want to make sure the community understands, uh, that it is a volunteer job, that this is not something that you're getting paid for, um, and you're giving back to this community and trying to help our school district to become the very best and work alongside, uh, myself, uh, the rest of our staff, and really set the tone for, for our school district. And so, um, with that, I just want to recognize and appreciate, extend my appreciation to all of you as a board, um, and then hand you some certificates, um, from WASDA. So finishing her half a year, uh, right now, uh, our junior board rep, Lucy Dorr. In his third year, on his fourth year right now, Director Dan Loitz. Uh, finishing her first year and going into the second is Jody Lee. Um, in her seventh year, now into her eighth year, um, second term is Deborah Lurie. Also finishing her first term and into her second term is Christina Martinez. That's right. It took a little longer to, uh, get you, uh, onto the board. I think it was the second meeting in January. Well, that was Jody, and you came in at the last minute into the, um, WASDA conference, uh, running in. Um, and in her second term, uh, the first year, Maddie Ty Tucker, five years. And then to Ava, uh, finishing her year and a half, going into her second year as our senior board rep, Ava Z. We also, um, recognitions for this month, um, want to, you know, in part of our values, vision, and mission, talks about the whole child and thinking about, um, the academic experience. And I think Mr. Wold was talking about this just in the event that, um, some of us came to as they have their future Islander night. We have, uh, eighth graders and future possible students at the high school up there tonight. And I think he spoke about this too, that there is an academic component, and that is a critical piece of public education. Um, but it's also all of the other aspects of school, uh, that make it a special place. And those are the caring adults that take care of them. Um, those are the opportunities they have outside of the classroom as well as inside the classroom. And so, um, we're always trying to think about, um, supporting that whole child. Uh, in this month, uh, we also have coming up this Monday, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. Uh, it's often times been said that this is not a day off, but rather a day on. And how do we as, um, uh, citizens and community members come together and really honor the legacy and the accomplishments of Dr. Martin Luther King? Um, and on the same day, we'll also be, uh, inaugurating a president. And so, uh, Monday is a, certainly a big day for our country. Later on this month, we'll have International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Uh, later on in the spring, we also have, uh, uh, honor and a recognition for our own country with, um, Holocaust, but this is the international day. Um, this is what goes, uh, was started by the United Nations, um, some number of years ago. And then rounding out the year, we have Lunar New Year towards the end of this month. And just a reminder for the community, I believe it's February second, uh, at the community center, there'll be, um, a large event. It'll be the second year, um, hosted across our community, representing all of the different Lunar New Years in a bar, um, of many of our Asian, uh, cultures and, um, uh, community members. But Lunar New Year this year is on January twenty ninth. So with that, those are my recognitions.
Thank you. Um, it is time for public input. And we have, I think, seven. No, sorry. Yeah, seven people signed up. Uh, the first one is Seth Landau. I'm just going to read the public input statement once, which is, "This meeting is meeting of the board in public. It is not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. If you would like to address the board on a particular issue by accessing the Zoom meeting or in person, please complete the form that you have on our, uh, different website. Uh, when addressing the board of the meeting, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern, and if desired, provide your written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or legal guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed." Thank you.
All I'm thirsty, I'd like to say is I'd like to jump back to a time when people were here testifying on another matter. One of him flown here from Asia on his own money. He was PhD, went to Mercer Island, graduated from Harvard. And when he was talking here, that after this meeting, each one of the people were given three minutes at this meeting as a first meeting, all the rest they'd been allowed to go over. This individual traveled all this way, gave his talk, and was told to stop by Deborah with three minutes on the thing. He said, "I have two more sentences to read," and she told him to send it in in an email. Wrong, you're very rude. Number two, how dare you scream at the other members of the school board about an issue? The SAT. We're going to be talking about that real quickly here. You screamed out, "I don't want to get in the business of telling our district how to do things." What are you here for? Maddie, you wrote in a response to the paper, you basically implied it's very easy to get an SAT test around here for students. And I'm glad you think that way, because you're going to find out how wrong you are by the army of people that are going to start telling you about that. And that's something that's very, very important. I'm glad you responded to that. Why don't you want an SAT here? Deborah, why don't you want an SAT here? Fred, why have you pulled the board not to allow an SAT test here? They don't cost anything. They happen on a Saturday. They're in the home field advantage. Students from Mercer Island can take them here. There's no reason on earth not to have them here. They gave me here for a long time in the past. I wouldn't doubt it if Deborah went and took hers here, took one. I don't know. So I don't think you have any idea what the kids want, and I don't think you know how to behave with our people on this board in public. And I think you're rude to people that come here. Fred, I don't understand why you don't want an SAT test here. You know darn well the trouble these kids have to go through to take, you know, yeah, they give it a different place here, and they're going to find out about kids that have had to travel fifty miles to the end of the state to take it because they want to take it in the summer. So that's, that's that. These students told you very, very clearly in what they said to the paper, that they needed some guidance on this, that they weren't being guided on the SAT. And I think that you should listen to what the students have to say. Um, looking for that exact quote here. They said, "Better communication helps students navigate the SAT process more effectively." What does that mean? When you have students that are wonderful and they're on your board, and they have to hear that, they have to hear they got to go somewhere else. I got twenty-three seconds left, and I want to use every bit of it. This school board is a disaster. One of you has the worst language in the world. I have document after document after document with you using the F-word, referring to everything and everybody. I got that in my information request for your documents. Oh, my time is almost up. Fred, they had on the agenda Monday to look at your contract. Why did they take it off on Tuesday?
Thank you. Next, we have a trio of students, Hayden Bond, Austin Brooks, and Edgar Ramirez.
I'm in there. This is Hayden. The teacher of. The teacher of, uh, my, Hayden. Hayden. Uh, introduction to AI and the why. AI is a powerful tool to gather ideas and generate just about anything in the, in the digital world within a few seconds. We use AI to help with small tasks throughout our everyday life. Um, this could be like, uh, learning how to create an email, right? Or putting out a date into a calendar. What we learned in AI in class. Um, there's no set unit in classes about AI. It's really like stay away from AI. Um, it could be dangerous. Um, and you could cheat on it, right? Um, we have to get signed off to have a unit, um, of AI, including AI. Um, so we don't learn too much about it. We just know that it's very, uh, it could go anywhere. Um, how do we get AI in classrooms? Now, first, we would have to address the concerns about AI, what it can do, how, how far it'll go to complete the task that you ask it to, uh, do. Um, we also need to, um, inform teachers on how to get around these, um, concerns. And, um, we need to explain how AI can personalize learning for students, helping them learn at their own pace and their own preferred style. All right. Next is reasons we should put AI in classrooms. So the efficiency, it helps teachers and students within research, grading, and many other aspects. Um, future work preparation, we have many jobs, uh, that AI has been incorporated in. A lot of science jobs, AI can help us with data, um, look, looking through data and just, um, understanding vast material, or vast materials. Um, supporting diverse learners. It can help support different ways of learning throughout the classroom. For me, I'm an example. I have dyslexia, and I use AI to read through databases and different worksheets and/or kind of anything on the internet. Or it can also help other students that have language needs. Um, AI can help translate, simplify, uh, or just straight up read in a different language for those students. All right. How do we inform teachers on AI? So some ways we can inform the teachers on AI is through the professional development days. You guys have those all the time throughout the year. If we just add some that have AI focused, uh, AI-focused days, it will just instantly help, um, show some teachers the way that AI can help. Um, also attending conferences and seminars about AI that, um, focus on the good aspects that, um, teachers and students and just your everyday person can use, whether it's from creating an email to looking through grades to writing an essay. Um. Uh, how we keep AI in the classroom safe, just monitoring, using different tools to watch over the students. All right. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, we'll come back to her at the end if, um, if she's. Uh, next is Samantha Rubenfield.
I hold a disclosure, I have severe ADHD, and I've used AI to help me draft this. Because I have a hard time getting started on writing projects. It's a great tool. But, um, so some of you know me, my name is Samantha Rubenfield. I serve on PGA, boards, et cetera. But tonight, I'm here as a parent of a child in the district, and I'm here tonight to ask you to vote in favor of bond resolution in seventy-three states. As members of this community, we all share a common goal, to ensure that our children have the best possible opportunities to succeed. One of the most powerful ways we can support their future is by providing them with safe, modern, and well-equipped learning environments. The proposed school construction bond is not just an investment in our schools, it's an investment in the future of our community as a whole. The, this bond will help us renovate and upgrade our existing schools, build new classrooms, improve the teacher, and ensure that our facilities meet the needs of today's students. These improvements will create spaces where our children can thrive, learn, and grow in the years of tomorrow. In turn, these investments will help our community continue to prosper. They're more than just places of learning, they're the anchors of our neighborhoods and hubs of community engagement. By approving this bond, we're making a statement that we believe in our future, both the future of our children and the future of our island. The bond will provide the resources needed to modernize our aging facilities, which will improve educational outcomes and help attract new families to our area. Additionally, will maintain high-quality schools, increase property values, and make our community a more desirable, desirable place to live, work, and raise a family. Passing this bond will ensure that we're not only preparing our children for success, but also investing in stronger, more resilient community for years to come. It's a commitment to educational excellence, safety, and opportunity that will pay dividends for generations. So I urge you to vote yes on this school construction bond.
Finally, we have Tom Hager.
Uh, before I get started, I want to thank Michelle, because people were texting me this link that you guys gave, the sign into the meeting as I'm talking, and she sent me the right ones, at least the people that tried to get him out of now. Um, okay, I, uh, no AI ML presentation here at all, just to be clear. Um, didn't want to plagiarize anything. Uh, but I will tell you, the world of AI ML is coming faster than you know it. And that's why critical thinking is more important than ever, because the governance of AI, what it's used for is critical. So more focused on STEM, AI, and especially critical thinking is going to be important. Um, I'm here mostly to talk about the bond, and it's not going to pass. And there are a lot of reasons why. Could be board behaviors, could be people can't afford it anymore. It could be that your approval rating has dropped from sixty-nine percent to like fifty-eight percent in the last survey. Um, you know, a friend of mine, a personal graduate, just moved back on fifty-nine, he bought a house here, uh, recently, last summer, and the, uh, he was talking about taxes, the stuff, or a group of us was talking about taxes, and his kids aren't even going to personal schools. And he is a graduate of Mercer Island. Um, so we have challenges there. And what I would say is, I, I believe strongly that teachers need to be paid more money, for sure. Um, we can't even, they can't even afford to live in the neighborhoods in a lot of cases. So it's not a question of the salaries, it's a question of how the money is being used and people are losing faith that, uh, what's being taught to their kids is evidence by their surveys. Um, the, um, and, and there are a lot of other issues. The college counselors in the school district, are they setting them up for success? Why are parents having to pay five, six, seven thousand dollars to get counselors when the counselors at the schools aren't working? The supplemental education through private tutoring, because the quality of education is dropping in schools. All of those factors are going to come into play when people make a decision at the ballot box, and it will be a lot like Prop One with the city, which reminds me that the city's going to be running a lobby at the same time, and they have no police station, no city hall, and they can demonstrate a return on the investment. So I'm not telling you to vote yes or no on the lobby, I'm just telling you, the way that it's set up currently, there's no way in heck that thing is going to pass. Um, the other thing I just want to add on, there was a gentleman, someone who spoke earlier about the, uh, the SATs. That stuff is an easy fix, it's an easy win. I had to drive to, um, Yanacor, just take a ferry, get a hotel, and get my kid to take a test. We're lucky, we can afford it. I'm retired out of aerospace and technology, we're very lucky. Other kids can't do that. There's no reason to make taking SAT tests harder on students than we, than it already is. Um, the last thing that I would say, and I, I, um, I have two special needs kids, you all know, and we're very thankful for the support that we get from the teachers here. But the whole move to, um, get rid of the AP programs and the intense movement toward inclusion is a big miss at the time. Now Fred told me that was from the state, being mandated. But you're ruining the education experience, not just for my specialized kids who need survival skills, but also for the kids that are in the classrooms, uh, Janet, and don't get the parent supportive thing. So huge advocate for the teachers. I'd like to see the bond passed with the way that it's structured now, I don't think it will. Thank you.
No gentleman caller popping up? The max with public input? Thank you, everyone. Okay. Uh, starting with personal dominance process monitoring, court health, the eighteen hundred oh, V seven, financial administration, this is the bond resolution, this is our second reading of the bond resolution.
So tonight, uh, attached to the, in addition to the resolution, we have, um, a few of the different handouts. Um, these have been used in previous board meetings, just so the community, um, or so that even you have seen a lot of these, um, can kind of see the one-pagers on the high school project, the middle school project, and, um, the admin crest, um, portion of that project. And so, um, what you have in front of you is, um, the resolution itself, the bond obligations over time, and the tax structure on that, um, which we wanted to make sure was available for the community. Uh, and we'll open that up to, um, discussion from the board, uh, as a second reading, the first reading being the December meeting. And so, um, we'll really turn it over to you as a board, and we're here to answer any questions you need.
Do we want to go like person by person, and we'll have questions or comments, or do we want to just kind of discuss where we're at right now? I'm just going to open it for general discussion, then if people want to go with one at a time. Jenny, I just want to acknowledge the, um, the wide-ranging listening to the community and the efforts that, um, our partners are, uh, that we work with, to, like our architectural partners and whatever work, um, to really focus in on what best serves our community, um, what needs our most pressing, and, um, you know, frankly, what could we, or what is a, something that we want to have versus something that we really need to have to be responsible stewards of our schools? And, um, and Ava will tell us, as she served on the, one of the outreach committees, that, you know, people were really at the end, just like, you know, feeling their darlings to get this, to get the bond to a place, or to get the proposal to a place where it was really, um, something that felt responsible, felt, um, manageable, but also served as like responsible stewardship to keep our schools in good shape, um, do the repairs that needed to be done for safety or equity issues, and then, um, saving some of the things that we'd all wished would happen for another time, or, you know, for like the potential future. But I think that, um, a lot of people worked very hard, including the volunteers on this But I think that um a lot of people worked very hard, including the volunteers on these committees, to um and and our middle school admins and stuff, to really just like listen to the community, listen to the all the effective parties, the educators, families, the community, and see what best served um our Mercy Island School District.
To piggyback on that, I would echo what Jody said in terms of thanking everyone in the community for the participation time. Uh, the only question that I have is on the one-page handout. Um, there is a discussion of perhaps sixty-five million dollars for elementary schools, which is a reduction from what we provisionally saw. And then when I was just doing the back of the math envelope um a few hours ago, there's eighteen classrooms that are contemplated uh in the extension in I or the renovation of I M S for eighty-three million dollars, so I'm a little bit perplexed as to how we can build an entire elementary school, um which I imagine has more than eighteen classrooms and certainly more common spaces for sixty-five million. Is that a question that you?
Yeah, I I don't understand sixty-five million.
So um I could probably bring up Randy um Box who is here on that. At first I thought Director Glow, it's that you were talking about the elementary study. I now hear what you're saying about the cost of an elementary. And so Randy, you want to start with that?
Yeah, I can.
Can you direct us to what?
It is the one-page synopsis where it says twenty twenty-five bond package and it has.
Twenty-five oh one one five bond budget dot PDF. Oh, okay.
And it is the very bottom. Okay. I like footnotes, I'm a lawyer.
As Randy goes into this, um the design of this particular um page, um we know that, you know, some people want to look at the full one-pagers and see all of the components, and some people want to just see what's in there. Um, and so, you know, this has gone through lots of iterations to try to get it um in the best way possible to try to explain to our community, our voters, um or whatnot, so appreciate that question.
Excuse me, Director Glow, it's the uh if you scroll up a little bit, the seventy-two million dollars um is in twenty twenty-four, so you would escalate that by five percent to get to a twenty twenty-five number. That is for approximately sixty-five thousand square feet for the middle school. Um, the middle school not only contains um classrooms, but it also includes uh an art room. Help me out here, Mary Jo.
Office.
The relocation of the of the office space, it also has, you know, a big maker space, it has some large little smaller areas. Um, and the elementaries are all contemplated on the smaller scale elementary. Um, so I I didn't recreate that elementary school number, I took that directly from the long-range facilities plan work that had been done and escalated it to twenty twenty-five to try and get us on that same playing field. But they definitely would be smaller um than what you're going to see in the middle school.
Just to to clarify, the elementaries would be, it would be in in our anticipation, you know, God knows what would happen, but like um renovation, not construction, right? No, this is.
This was, those numbers contemplate new construction. We looked at that and renovation and new construction wasn't very far apart. Right. Uh, but you did see some higher elementary school numbers, but that was when we were talking potentially a larger school. And these are all that four hundred and fifty student capacity.
And so um two things on that, and then I see Director Martinez um there. I, you know, I would be remiss, I think, brought up a good point around thanking people. Um, Director Laurie and you, Director Glow, it's served on those long-range facility planning committees. Um, and to the question that you asked, that's partly why the elementary study is in there. Um, because a study can take us back to renovation, contemplating renovation again, or a complete rebuild. Um, it also gives us time to determine um certainly where we're going to be with our enrollment. Um, and our community at this point in time has clearly said, the four-school model in the neighborhoods is what is preferred, is what's desired. And so, you know, whenever this is recontemplated, there may be a different school of thought. However, this will give us a chance to study that, so.
Yeah, I I think it will also give us a chance to study whether we can um i- if it's renovation, can we do that with kids in the school? Or do we need to, you know, um move kids off-site to make that happen? Or can we do new construction and can that happen on an occupied site? So that's a, that's a big question to answer for the community.
Christina.
Um, I think you answered what I was going to comment, so it's uh I I um also appreciate all the work that I've been done. I also want to make sure that the community understands that uh the only way to actually make construction of schools and it's through a bond. We cannot just levy or general bond or any other bond to renovate our schools. The kids do deserve a the right environment to to study and and creating our legislative uh that was passing in the arena conference, that was one of the things that the student panel at the end mentioned, that the kids do deserve uh the environment to learn, that 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 it's not just fixing with things, that it makes a complete difference on the way that they learn. And uh this is the only way that we can make this happen. And and I think that that if the kids are something that we really need to invest, it is something that we really would have to take serious. I also understand the tax burden, it affects all of us. Um, I I do recommend that everybody will see the graph and see how it's going to look like. Um, it's not, has not been an easy decision of getting to these numbers. And at the same time, I also believe that the kids need the right environment to just write. And and for us to give them um the right tools to to achieve their first potential, I think, is one of them. Um, so there's just my comment on that.
Yeah. Goodbye, Jody.
I think it's really sad that we're in a place where there need to be personal attacks rather than commenting on issues. It's not helpful, it's not productive, it's not wanted. If you have an issue with an input with the school, our staff, program, the building, let's talk about that. Because some must commit a lot of time and then follow through with that commitment in order to be here to do things for our kids who aren't even in the schools. Um, I think this bond is phenomenal. I think the work that's been done over the last, gosh, five, ten years now has uh really brought us to where we are now. Uh, we've learned so much over the years in terms of what's kind of too much to take on, um what's the right size to take on, the the failing from twenty-four, twelve to twenty fourteen really taught us. Um, we're a small community, um we need to impact our current students as little as possible at the time of the construction, and yet build for the future. We recognize the the financial impact we have on a lot of our families, on everybody, on our seniors who have fixed incomes, on our um everybody. Everybody chooses how to spend their money and and budgets accordingly. Um, I think that uh all of these, frankly, all of the goals were able to be achieved through this plan, um through the planning, both in creating the first facility master plan, sorry, facilities plan. And then the second one, the updated one that was more specific. Um, is it exactly what each individual is thinking it would be? No, but that's the power of the group and the brain trust in terms of working together with the facilities. And then also with the with the community um groups uh coming up with the decisions. And then the, I can't remember what you guys all called yourselves, but um with with the.
The what?
The get for the high school, the middle school was something else. Uh, in terms of really having the people in the know, um who are in those buildings every day, making the decisions. And it was um wonderful to hear the conversations and and then, you know, both the people that saw, someone implied this, but um saw the projects that that kind of, you know, went front center and then the ones that that were pushed back to lesser of a priority. Um, even when they kind of came in with people's pet pet projects, the things that they really cared about were impacted by, but then suddenly they live with a whole. I uh love that we are focusing on the middle school and high school after hearing from our community that that the elementary family is more ready for this type of project right now. Um, and then also to be um letting our enrollment numbers kind of, uh, you know, waiting and seeing how they how they stabilize and and what happens with those enrollments so we can make the best decisions possible in the future about whether or not to um renovate, rebuild, three, two, four, whatever, those are, those are decisions for another day. So um I would love for the focus, since this is the proposal based on, you know, thousands of hours of work and and hundreds of volunteer hours um from people all throughout our community. That uh, you know, this is the proposal and and this is where it really happened. So I know there's talk of elementary schools, but there's no elementary school on this bond, that it's really finishing what we started in twenty fourteen. Well, twenty, you know, whatever, the middle school. And then the uh the programs that our students, uh the enhancements that our high school students really need and deserve in order to make their um, in order to make their education as robust and and um interactive and um successful as possible. Uh, you know, what better way than a group of high school students um and high school staff advocating for the things that they know will make their school a better place? Um, does it do everything? No. Um, does it do a lot? Yes. Does it um keep in mind that the financial restrictions, the um ability to, you know, have schools throughout um with our current enrollment numbers of um impact at the the least impact on current students with the most impact on our future students? Um, with middle school and high school, it touches every single student in our district. And uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get to the rest of it one day, but I think that we really need to focus on what this is. If we um, I don't even know that it would be the best thing if we could do an elementary school or all of the elementary schools. That's huge undertaking, we don't have the staff to support it and it would be misplacing uh so many people um that are, that our students deserve more, they they deserve to be educated during this time of of flux. Um, and uh it it's just a really great plan. The, I I think the cost is right in line with what we're comfortable with, um in terms of what we've been, I'm sorry, with what we've been comfortable with in the past, when looking at the numbers um from the twenty fourteen that would, that only has been described as successful, on time, on budget, um and successful with regards to, you know, how the middle school students are are using the facility and have been. That uh, you know, it's it's very equivalent to that, to that project in twenty twenty-five dollars. Um, it's it's less than what we spent back in twenty fourteen. Our kids deserve it, our staff deserves it, um and our community deserves it. So um I'm, it, you know, it's a sixty percent pass rate is tough. Um, I'm still hoping our legislature takes a look at that session and that we're able to benefit from that. I still don't know, I don't think we've got a clear answer on whether or not we can. Um, but uh I I urge people, if they have questions about it, um to really dive in deep and ask those. And then, uh, we've got committee members from both schools who can better answer the specific questions than um about why, why different projects were chosen. Um, I think it's great, I'm really proud of it, and I will be very proud to support this resolution.
Thank you. We uh we learned at the meeting last week that Washington has one of only thirteen things that hurt, but requires more than fifty percent um for message of the school bond, so that's just interesting, I didn't know that that was.
Can I add one last thing? I really, really hope that we can move forward with robust, respectful conversations about the bond, about the personal attacks, because the personal attacks that we felt today is impact our our conversation. Everyone's afraid to talk, makes me really sad.
Should be. Actually, I'd love to hear from the students first.
Yeah, sure. Um, I know it would facilitate more specifically since she was on the bench, but I would just say, I think that the get has a wonderful job, I mean, they don't think they've left and it's still in turn, like, everything they've decided to include in the bond is really needed, and especially considering middle school, right? Those are some of the worst buildings, now I remember being in them, they're more difficult to learn in because they're not very good quality. And so I think that's definitely a hassle to edit the middle school and, you know, thinking about the high school. There's a lot around safety and that's especially important for our students. I mean, more of a population in those places where kids can remain in our schools as safe as they possibly can be. I think it's incredibly important, so I think this isn't like things that we want to have, this is definitely things that we need to do. Um, and so I think it's great and I strongly support it because it's definitely something that all our students want to do. It's definitely their highest priority, I think, as part of the structure.
Yeah, um, and I also think, I agree with a lot of what has been said. And I think throughout every process, a lot of intentional um actions are made to have community feedback at every step, like starting out with with every idea and having all students, all community members like share ideas and then having more community members on the the specific committees to help decide. A lot of compromises were made and um this bond, I think, like really addresses the needs of today and the near future. And um all these improvements that are in the bond are so that students can focus on learning, right? So they don't have to worry about like freezing in the classrooms or um about like if there are crests, like if someone's going to just walk into the building without a vest of you. So I think all of the projects that are in the bond are all necessary. And um and the community should vote yes, especially because if we push it on to the later generations, it's just gonna, it's gonna be harder for the school to have to um kind of make up for the work that wasn't done in the past, and it's going to cost more for the community. So it's better for the community to address it now and really take care of the schools.
Yeah, um, I believe that the proposal, which has been presented to us, is reasonable on its face and worthy of public consideration. In particular, I am proud that it reflects the board's commitment to environmental sustainability, is reflected in the mass timber building method I championed at the middle school. At the same time, there remain outstanding questions about how this bond fits into the larger fiscal picture, which I believe is best evaluated by the community at large.
Thank you.
I wanted to just, you you stole my line about students freezing, you know? I just wanted to talk a little bit about um what what my hope for this building project is, assuming that we decide to to book forward the bond and assuming that the community passes it. I'm really excited, like the schools on Mercer Island haven't changed that much since I moved Cherish Bowlish years ago. Um, I'm really excited to see like more like environmentally friendly building. I'm excited about the increased safety for kids, like I went to pick my kid up at the middle school the other day after her rehearsal and she was like sitting in the dark driving, I was like, ah, you know? Um, I like the idea of like controlling access more um for like students and parents. Um, and uh some of the the things that were mentioned today about how the world is changing, like AI, you know, machine learning and the presentation we had from the from the high schoolers, like a lot of the redesign that's been done on the middle school and the high school is to foster the kind of learning that we need. If we're going to be more serious about STEM, if we're going to be more serious about kind of preparing our kids for the 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 future workplace, you know, like collaborative learning, you know, being able to like work together in groups, that kind of thing. You know, of course you can do it like, you know, with, you know, in West Mercer, for example, as it is now. I realize that's not something that's going to be changed by this project, but, excuse me, that um, you know, you're kind of like looking against the tide, you're kind of like struggling against the tide when you're in like a small classroom and you got your crowded hallway and everybody's walking past, yes, you can be doing collaborative learning there. But like, you know, at the middle school, the proposal is to have these like areas that are specifically designed to kind of encourage that type of collaborative learning. Again, of course, like, you know, designing the night tours, like new technology for learning, that kind of thing. Um, and we have a particularly, I think, in some ways, rosy perspective sitting here as as the school board, because we see these amazing kids, true bin here, like, you know, two times a month, getting like, they've won national awards, they've won, you know, international awards, they they are state champions, like our kiddos tonight, right? And and to think that they're doing that in in, you know, a physical building that is really like not necessarily set up for what they're doing. Like our wonderful, you know, radio kids are working in, you know, with like some pretty antiquated, you know, setups. And like the teachers aren't even able to fully supervise them a hundred percent of the time because there's two teachers and the kids are working in three completely different separate spaces, right? So you're going to solve that problem, right, as a teacher, it's kind of tough. So um the idea of like bringing all the radio stuff together, like this is just going to make it more possible for kids to do more great things. Um, I'm really optimistic about this project, that it will improve the 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 setting and the educational opportunities for all of our, our, you know, students, whether they're in special education or AP classes or in some cases.
or in some cases both, you know. I think that this is like gonna be a great feature for our small district. For those with parents and the community members who are just kind of now tuning into this project and, you know, bond proposal, there's so much on the website. If you go to the district website and hop around a bit, there's some brief, like one hour proposal, one hour videos especially, that I think really sum up what the proposals are, what would we kind of like purchase with this money, you know, if the public chooses to. That's my two cents. I'm excited that that's.
The last thing I would say is, you know, I commend the board because this started, you know, and then COVID did it. And you had a, and some of them were your predecessors. You had a desire to continue to think about the facilities and these community assets. And after hiring me, that was one of the things that you pushed and said, we need to keep this going. And we want a plan that's going to really look forward. And, you know, we've floated some challenging things before the community. We talked about possibly closing a school and we, we learned from that. And you as a board have been very clear around making sure that we learn from the past. And I wasn't here in the nineties, bond pieces that kind of got us to today, but I was here in the 2012, when I think some of the feedback was a $200 million price tag without a lot of sketches and ideas feels like a blank check. And that was something that you were insistent upon not having this time because in 2014, we came to the community with a very logical plan, sketches, drawings. And that's what you wanted and, and wanted to make sure that you're holding us accountable to bring it forward to you. And some of you are part of that process. And from Mary Jo back there, it's not easy trying to be a principal of the day and a planning principal in the day as well. And Brandy and Nick and all the teachers who were part of it to get it to where we are today. And this is just the next piece forward. And I keep saying it's always our job to bring to the community options. And based on all the listening, this seems to be in the best interest and the best option. Is it everything? As you said, no, we're not rebuilding, you know, the high school. We're not doing those things. We're doing the things that are much more similar to the 2014 project, which was finishing that middle stool, doing some targeted things. But I just appreciate all the support along the way and the courage to continue forward because it's not easy. So, thanks.
Do I have a motion to? Or do people want to do more discussion?
I believe we approve the resolution number seven thirty-six.
Consider. All in favor of approving resolution number seven thirty-six, the general application bond? They say aye, students?
Aye.
Board members? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is two zero and five zero. Thank you so much. The next, I don't want me agenda is, and yeah, I could also need to go. We totally understand. Carries and tweeting and things like that.
Max, so then you don't want to see my next.
Whatever, the opposite of that.
I'm shocked.
It's so pretty. Focus fundamentals, fundamental two, highest learning standard.
Great. I, I'm gonna bring it over, send it over to Director Nova Williams, who has been hard at work kind of compiling this. She's tried to look at it in a couple of different ways and maybe give you a different look at the information. It's all the same information, but maybe a slightly different look. So I'll turn it over.
Yeah. So you have all of the same data just in table format instead, and I personally like the visuals. So I put, took out some of the highlights and kind of placed those in there. So you're not going to see graphs for everything because that would be an enormous presentation, but you will see them for some. Yeah. And he says it's a hundred feet.
It's the screen when it's going back.
Let me see if I can. Nope.
You do that, Al.
All right. Okay. So I took our metrics from the fourth grade smarter balanced and I broke them out. You have literacy and then you also have math on the next slide. But go back to.
I heard next slide.
So we have in the bottoms, you'll see the all fourth grade scores. And then we have fourth graders who receive EL services, fourth graders who receive special education services, and the fourth graders who are identified as low income. So you have four bars, main bars there that are representative of their, the percentage of students who are scoring at or above on this particular test. And then I added the line just so that we could have a representation of where our curricular tools changed. And then the notes on the side will make reference to that. So for K two, we did the adoption in 21, 22 for our new literacy program. And then in three, five, it was 22, 23. So our fourth grade students, as represented here, have received three years of instruction using our new tool. Same graphic, same idea here. The only difference is that you also have fifth grade on here as well. What we note is although plateau for, by and large, for that fourth grade holistic view and students receiving EL services, we see some significant jumps for our students with special ed services and identified as low income. And then our fifth grade, excuse me, our fifth grade students continue to grow. So we're seeing some gradual growth there. The difference here in that purple bar that you see, fifth graders receive three years of instruction using the new tool and fourth graders would have only received two years of instruction with that new tool. So I wanted to identify that for you so you could see that marker.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Definition, low income, is that the same as free and reduced?
Okay. So then in six through eight, we use the seventh grade as our reporting grade. And you see here for literacy, same thing, at or above percentage of students, seventh grade, all of them. We have a relative plateau in the last couple of years there for the whole, whole grouping. Students who are receiving EL services went down and students receiving special ed services went up significantly. And then seventh graders identified as low income also went up. So we see some growth there. He's already seen it. So. And then six, eight math at or above, the smarter balance, same thing, seventh graders. We've had three years of relative similar scores there in the overall. A little bit of a downtrend in some of those other categories and then upward trend for our seventh graders identified as low income.
Sorry, what was going on in twenty one, twenty two there with the seventh grade? English, is that English language?
This is math.
What's EL services?
EL services are students who are receiving English language development services. Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And what happens there? It's hard to say. They're not cohorts. So this is not the same grouping of kids. So there would be a different number of students in that pocket, a different grouping of kids. And then nine, 12, in our report, you have the literacy at or above for smarter balanced. Tenth grade has an upward trend in all of the categories. And then for math, the recording is around the percent of seniors who are taking more than three years of math. That is up this year and I added the number just to make it a little easier. Eighty one point nine was last year and eighty eight point two this year.
Are we, can I, can I, I don't know, are we asking questions around or are we in?
I mean, it's like.
It's fine, right?
Yes, it's a question. Is this? I, I, I feel like I saw a dip, a huge dip in the students taking calculus AB and NBC from last year compared to this year.
Okay, I mean, the, the number of or the scores?
I think you're right. I believe you're right.
The number of.
And is it the number of students who took the test or the number of students enrolled? Well, it's on the.
Oh, that's that. Okay. Sorry. It was math. So I, and senior, so that's, okay. Never mind. Sorry.
No worries. Science, this is the three grade levels where they take our science exam for the state. Washington Conference of Assessment of Science happens in fifth grade, eighth grade and 11th grade. We had some growth there in fifth grade, 11th grade, a little bit down in eighth grade there slightly. Same idea as the math one that you just saw. This is more than three years of science. So what you see for more than three years of science, and I added those numbers on the side for you just so you could see them. Fifty five point two percent up to seventy point six percent.
And just a reminder for, I, I know you are well aware as a board, the reason why we're measuring more than three years is because the grad requirement is three years of science and three years of math. But we're looking at how many students are we getting to actually exceed that? And that's why this has been measured over the years under fundamental two.
So these are in, these are a bit of a mixed bag here because these fall into that last category on that first document. So you have on time graduation marked here. Again, that blue line is our current, well, last school year. Extended graduation and then average ACT composite score. The only reason that's lower is just because of the end game. And then the last two, for the purposes of you not probably being able to see those super clearly. The first one, there says, parents who agree this school is doing a good job of preparing students for a successful future. That is up just slightly. And then students who agree this school is doing a good job of preparing me to succeed in life, also up. Similar to the ACT scores, these are the average SAT scores. A slight increase. It's like a tiny little increase. And then these are just some additional metrics that we have. So that first row there, the first column there is going to be seniors with more than six semesters of social studies. Pretty significant increase.
What happened there?
They added the.
These, these students wouldn't have taken the ninth grade course, which, because we would have added, so that cohort isn't coming through. This certainly caught my attention as well.
Yes.
Ava, as our senior board rep, any idea why your classmates are excelling or taking so many more social studies courses?
Honestly?
Hypothesis?
I, maybe we're just really excited about like doing it like early Civ and like modern world history. Yeah, I think like maybe just great history teachers, like wanting to hear the good reviews. That's all I can really think of. Yeah.
I mean, it's really just the kids that take the early Civ and now the yeah, new ones, right? Because otherwise they have to take six.
They have to take.
They have to take.
Civics?
Six semester, sorry. Freshman year is elective.
Yeah.
And then sophomore junior seniors required.
Oh, Jamie just messaged and said it's macro.
It's macro.
Thanks, Jamie.
And I would be remiss not to just take a moment. And I know that it happened before the break, but we haven't had a meeting since and it hit a number of our students pretty hard, including Amy by hand who's who were both influenced by Mr. John Stafford. And that was the course. If that course is the reason, Mr. Stafford is a big reason. He brought it to life and I think I'll turn it over to the two of you as students. If I may, and really talk about maybe Mr. Stafford just for a second, but had a chance to attend his memorial service and hear testimonial from students that Mr. Wold read. And that was by far probably the most powerful time of that. And so. Either of you.
Yeah, we actually, we're gonna talk about it in a.
Oh, you wanna wait?
Not now. If you'd like, but if you don't.
Yeah, go ahead, please. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Yeah, well, Mr. Stafford was definitely like an incredible teacher, like he impacted his students. Sorry, both inside and outside the classroom. Sorry. It was horrible. Things could happen, but it was horrible for many students. And he really cared about them and he pushes students to really go deeper and grapple with the material. And he really impacted the community a lot because even students that didn't have them had friends. Thank you. Had stories and things to say about him. And he really did make a big impact, a bunch of people's vibes, including mine. And he sparked, like, love for learning. Yeah. Yeah, I'm currently in one of his classes. I'm in macro right now. And I know it's been hard for a while. And he was one of the main reasons why I took that class. Cause I heard so many great things about him. There were so many different people telling me, oh, he was such an amazing teacher. I think were all true. That's probably one of the best teachers I ever had. He really taught you to grapple with the material. Really, it's one of the most interesting classes. It was a class that I always looked forward to going to every season of it. And it's, he really pushed you to think and to think for, and to really apply the material to your life. And I mean, I could learn some of this in my class. And he teaches you, talking in a way, really remembered everything and really felt like, you know, you felt it in your bloodstream, like he always used to say, you know, really how to play in your bloodstream. And, and it's been a big loss for, to listen as a teacher and the big loss for that class. Yeah. And another thing is like, he really did care about his students and like believe in them. I remember like in class, he'd be like, yeah, this is you in like five years at the Federal Reserve. Like you will be like working on these in real life and graduates like still come. Like I know when he passed, a bunch of graduates came to pay respects. And many people sent him emails like after graduation, which I really hoped I was gonna be able to do. But yeah, he really just mattered to a lot of people. And yeah, we're missing dearly. He really cared about his students and his things. Like, I know, I know people who, you know, I know one girl who was coming back on the student. I'm excited to share about her, you know, the winning this one with him. It's just devastating to hear that you, because he really cared about his students and their accomplishments and really believed in their dreams. When you would do the thing in the beginning of the year where he would basically interview students, every single person in his class because he wanted to learn about his kids because he cared so much about everything. It's a natural question.
You guys, thank you.
Thank you.
And a bar graph like that doesn't tell the whole story, but it certainly is a legacy when you see someone who can drive that many students that want to take their course and bring that to life. And he came to this board with the textbook adoption for that class to get your approval. And he struggled with those textbooks and I'm not sure, you know, too many people poured over so many different versions. I think he has a couple of pirate copies of the one that he didn't choose, just so he can use some pieces that he wanted. But really appreciate you sharing that. And I know you carry the, the words of so many other students.
So the next column there, you'll see students taking fourth or fifth year AP. Pretty plateaued from last year. Student survey and parent survey are right next to each other. Student survey, my teachers helped me by learn, by challenging me with interesting activities in class. That one went up significantly. And then the parent survey went down slightly. Teachers have high expectations for student learning at this school. The next one, percent students with dual credit courses went up slightly and then ninth grade on track was relative plateau. Yeah.
You want to go maybe?
Don't have a lot to say about it, but yeah. So I think this is the one that was making reference, the director, Larry, was making reference to that calculus AB. As you can see across the years, it will show you the percent of students who are enrolled and also the students who took the exam and scored a three or higher through each of them. And so these are relatively close numbered with some increases here. AP statistics went up as did AP computer science there in really both of the categories enrolled and score three or higher.
Was this the section, Director?
Yeah.
That you were noticing?
It was, I think it was on the other one.
I think it's on the other one because this is last. I think it's on the other one, because this is last year's, which was, I know was high, because it was A, B, and B, C.
Yeah.
Um, so, look at that. Maybe.
I, I do wanna point out too, um though not reported exactly in this, you know, um the numbers of students taking tests and the numbers of tests taken um continues to um increase. And even as the school has decreased in population, the numbers of tests taken um are increasing and, um you know, I, I I think that um the access to those courses and the support and the educators who are finding, you know, unique ways to um challenge students and, and navigate this, um it speaks to that, it speaks to the students wanting that challenge and um and looking at that, but um though not represented because of the percentages, we do have an increase year over year. Um, every single year since two thousand twelve, when we started um mark uh tracking this. Um, COVID with a slight exception because a number of students um registered and then didn't take tests, there's lots of variables there.
Can I just ask one question? That's probably, probably irrelevant truth to numbers, but I'm just curious. If somebody took one of the AP exams and did not take the class, for example, AP computer science, would their score be reflected here because they're an Australian student, or is it only the students from our class, AP classes?
I think they can include it, don't they?
The percentage of students enrolled, obviously, in the course is just enrolled. The percentage of students who actually took it, though, there could be students in there that did not take the class um in those percentages, so, you know, they may uh take in computer science and but weren't enrolled in that class, because you can't take the test without. They are.
Sorry, really. Um, is the, so just to um follow along with uh calculus A B, although I'm not sure where I'm following along with that, but um on the, on the chart that's, that's headed sort of like more surrounding school district key performance fundamental two indicators. Under math, it has like the juniors and sophomores who take um calculus A B.
Yeah, that's the number.
And then, is this, students have seniors who have three years of math, would the fourth year then necessarily be calculus? Is that how we get to the numbers for seeing who's, how many seniors are taking?
Some might take statistics as a fourth year. Of math, is that, are you asking, what are the courses they take?
seniors to calculus. I mean, I think, I feel like that was the number.
A lot of kids.
Yeah, so I feel like the number we were, you were looking for was the calculus.
No, I, ignore me. I, I know, I know the one you're talking about.
Yeah.
And I don't know where it was or why, so, yeah, don't. It's AP calculus A B, that's the number. Okay.
Ava, thoughts just quickly on that um around what are students mainly taking in their fourth year math? And then Lucy, you're writing registration coming up here, and so you're thinking about it too, but um can you give us a flavor of, you know, the kinds of conversations that you're having with students about that fourth year? Um and then obviously you've.
Yeah, I feel like a lot of students do still opt to take calc, but then some, many others take stats because calc is a challenging course. And Ms. Yoder's a really great teacher who makes sure, make sure that all our students are prepared for the exam, which means that it's extremely, like, it's pretty challenging. And so like students who may not wanna be spending as much time in math their senior year will usually take stats. And also stats does apply to a lot more, um like other careers, like versus calc is probably STEM, STEM focused, so, um yeah, a lot of seniors do take stats instead of calc.
Also, in senior year, people are still taking a pre calc, a couple of people see it's already tracked to beyond, you know, steps and steps, there are steps. So they're taking six.
Yeah, I was gonna say from, you know, my perspective, I think the data that's in here gives certainly a part of the picture. I mean, you can look at various courses and see different pass rates. I mean, how that changes from year to year and from course to course. But it fundamentally seems somewhat incomplete. Like, for instance, when I look at the various courses, I can see there's a huge range amongst courses. I don't know if that's the nature of the AP test. I don't know if it's the nature of the teachers. And so what would be much more valuable to me to add a lot more depth would be how we compare to other districts. Both in those subjects as well as the absolute numbers. I mean, certainly sixteen hundred AP tests sounds like a lot, but it works out to a little more than one per student. I don't know if that's high, low, somewhere in the middle. Similarly, on elementary school, when I look at like SBA data, um we've had this long discussion, I, I think, you know, passing isn't particularly uh it doesn't give a very full picture of what's taking place. Now with tools such as iReady and Diagnostic, we should be able to compare it because other districts have also adopted those tools. Um to know if, how our cohorts, if we see the same growth patterns in the same segments. Um, so I guess obviously only the board can direct as to what information is gathered and presented to the board. But from my individual perspective, it's difficult to say with any certainty if we're achieving the highest learner standard.
And I, if I may, um, I think that um a potential opportunity, obviously during language review where we could do that, or if we felt that it was gonna need um a greater amount of time to do some of that, it could be part of a future study session or whatnot on that, um Director Glowitz. And we've had kind of some of those conversations, we, maybe we've started and stopped and um going back to that is certainly a conversation that um we welcome and would love to be part of.
Yes.
Um, I, I just wanna, you know, I've been saying for a couple of years now, and it's been clearly misinterpreted um about AP classes. Um when I've, I've been asking for a review of AP and whether or not it's the right program for our students in terms of meeting their needs and, and being, having the rigor and, and then the future benefit that, that we, the AP credits for college and all that. Because we know that there's lots of choices with college and the classroom and AP and IB and, you know, some we could do and some we can't do, but I would still love to see um whether or not AP continues to meet the needs of our students, or if there's other programs out there that um that exist now that would that possibly would better meet the needs of the students. I'm not anti AP. I am saying, we, we adopted AP long ago when there weren't a lot, when, and there were other options then too, but there's even more now, so I would just love to do a review and um uh just, just to see, I mean, it might be neat, but um I would love to just make sure, just like we did with the iPads and then to the laptops, um for the, for our high school students, like, is this still the best opportunity for students?
Or are there other?
Are there other ones that might better meet the need of all of our students, not taking away any rigor?
Or are there ways, I'm just chiming in because I heard you say this, I think it has been attributed a lot. Are there ways that the APs could be serving our students better? Like, uh, AB?
Any questions?
Anybody else have questions? I'm sorry, I didn't do this. I tried to go back to the previous presentation.
Sure.
One of the, the.
It's really your.
Um, the, the graduating on time. Yeah. Shouldn't that be higher?
I wanna look at the regular profile.
It might be for college. There's a, there's a.
There's a, there's a.
Okay, totally.
Yeah, we could totally label that.
Maybe just leave it on our college.
Yeah, college.
Oh, this means like.
You took an extra year to graduate.
Four and then.
Somebody would know if it was like less than seventy-five.
No, it's definitely more than that. So the blue is. Ninety-seven point two for.
Our, our kids that graduated in twenty twenty, the blue would be if they graduated. So seventy whatever, or sixty whatever percent graduated.
Okay.
And those are only the colleges that report in part of that. This is not a complete picture. Um, it is what we received from one report, um but it, it, I would caution us to say that it is not absolute. I mean, it, I think it's an indicator, but it is not, because we also then it also will show how many then were in five years or six years, and I think six years is as far as it goes.
Yeah, thank you for.
May not show if kids are doing like a, a fifth year master's degree, for example, it wouldn't show up there. So, um and notoriously, it's hard to get high school graduates to try to survey their college, like, we've tried it. I know, we're trying many times, and it's like.
Our number, just to say out loud, laugh, uh in twenty-two, twenty-three was ninety-four point one, and uh twenty-three, twenty-four was up ninety-seven point two.
Yeah.
A little panic.
I don't, I don't disagree with Dan. We've, in, in my years, we've gone and looked at this and said, like, this is, like, we, we've changed these a lot, and so I, it's, it's not a great system um of measuring, but but I also, but if we did do it this way, I'd wanna know um what the national percentage, if we're looking at what our percent of students who scored three or higher, what's the national percentage of students who scored three or higher on a particular test, just to, you know, some are harder than.
Yeah, that's a good point.
If we do it this way, which I'm not.
Uh, do you wanna go to the comparison within them? So this is just the comparison between uh regional districts and also the Washington state. Um, it's a little tricky because Washington state is right underneath Missouri, and that one is the most drastic uh comparatively, um but you can see in lots of these domains in terms of twenty-three, twenty-four, uh our scores are higher uh than most, if not all. Um, we see a dip in different places as we head into middle school, because some school districts are K-six in the elementary schools, other school districts are um then transitioning kids at different points. So what we see as a typical drop from fifth to sixth grade happens in different places in different districts. So um where we see that drop happens from fifth to sixth. In other places, they don't necessarily see that same drop. Uh for example, Bainbridge Island is one of those districts.
We've had conversations with Bainbridge. Um they're the A-four and five-eight model there. And um in fact, I was just talking to their superintendent not too long ago about maybe having a conversation between our districts and, you know, they're wanting to know, you know, why from fourth to fifth, there, you know, and we're saying from five, from fifth to sixth, um and so um we're kind of in the same cohort, she's the second year superintendent, so we were just having this conversation. Is it something to do with how we're transitioning? Is it something to do with how we're rolling through curriculum? And so we have lots of questions like that.
So I know that um.
Can I?
Please. Something to answer. Uh, um, I know this in general, and there's so many questions, specific data. Um, I would love, and I know you said that before twenty twenty-one is not available. Um, however, I, one, one observation that I see is that if I follow one cohort on twenty twenty-one, then on twenty twenty-two, the, like from third grade, fourth grade, and I can see how uh they're going down, and I don't think that necessarily is, could be something that is part of the curriculum that we need to fix, could be that this is, this, this is exactly what we're talking about. That these kids for the rest of their academic career might need an extra support, and what are we gonna do about that?
Yeah.
Because it is very clear, you do a diagonal kind of uh trend, it is across districts, and it's very clear how it goes down. So without knowing, you need to sell the data before. I don't know if this is a trend or uh if this happened to this specific cohort, or if um if there's something else in our curriculum or what, what is going on. I think that, that it is a little bit inconclusive for what I can see. However, I still, that's, that's something that um makes sense to me. I think that there's so many uh uh blanks, spots, and black holes on the academic uh lives of, of students that they're kind of where they were and what skills they need to learn, that, that is something that we have to
Yeah.
care. We're gonna have to work on.
And we do, we look at cohort data uh regularly, just to see how that is progressing. The other thing I think to just know, when we pull the data from the state report card, it's not the raw data. And so there is a difference between what is the raw data and what is produced out of the state, because the state will count against us, kids who refuse to test. Um, and so when we look at our raw data, it is slightly different than what we see in these. Um, so that might be something, as we consider, consider having changes made, then that might be something.
And uh also I would say that, that um when I say that it doesn't tell, that like, I would love some of the raw, raw data, uh the average, every, uh, uh, sorry, making an average of all the students doesn't tell me also the picture of who is exactly the ones who need, who most need, but if there's some difference between the, the, um, students that have I Q or five cohort, and how big is the difference? And I would love to care maybe when we have the, the special occasion, maybe those averages that are going, are going down is only in that community, or is with all the students? And I think that having that definition and having some more information will help us and, and the district to put the, the resource that necessary for, for those that, that are uh, that might need the express support because of this, or, or it's I think that there's a lot more things that I would love to see with this.
And, and uh we were just having a conversation um with, uh, well, you met Dr. Ray Smith, uh he's gonna come back and work with our uh school teams in the middle and mid-year um because we're looking at those exact um questions and who is not doing well, and then some work that Director Prescott's doing at the high school, who's doing well, or how are they doing on SBA, and how are they doing in their courses? And is there a correlation between the standards? And um the richness of the conversations around um, you know, student data is um really, I think, healthy for our system. And it also goes to, I think, what all five of you have said, and even the two, uh, our two students, and that is achievement is one thing, but how much growth do we also see? Um, because it's not just about kids doing really well. Are they getting a year's worth of growth or a year's worth of learning? And so that's another component that we're looking at.
I will add uh just that it has been three years, uh, straight up there since we had the COVID. And I'm thinking that when we open completely, right, there's nothing, only plenty, that uh if this still happening because of that or not. Also, if the strategies are being in place, are the right ones, or it's time to shift a little bit to make sure that they, they ask the rules, or those students do not if we had them at, at, uh, so, the petition, so.
No, Ben and I were just in another meeting together earlier this weekend. I'm kind of whispering like I wanna see cohort stuff, and so that's funny that she brought that. I mean, it makes sense, right? Um, I, I think it could tell us so much because um that, that we're not seeing, you know, we changed our math curriculum three years ago now, and um you know, we know, you know, but that doesn't really impact, that, that isn't going to really impact our middle school and high schools, well, middle school a little bit, but high school students at all. Um, in terms of continuing struggles. And so being able to kind of have the cohorts and then be able to pinpoint what curriculums were happening, we know that different teachers have different impacts on our students and, and, and not as an evaluated tool, but in terms of, you know, we all have our strengths. Um, and I, I just, I think it can give us so much information. I love what, hearing about Bainbridge. I think that um I think we underutilize our, our comparability to Bainbridge in terms of, you know, type of, you know, professional communities, similar size, similar drive, probably similar four-year college numbers and all that. And I think probably more than anyone else. Um, I mean, I can't think of another district in terms of size, you know, and everything. Um, and, and the, the way that, you know, they went through so many studies in terms of their K-four, five, six, seven, eight, right? They're still doing that, right? Or, they've got four levels, don't they?
Um, yes, K-four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, twelve.
Right, so they go through even more transitions, but, and they went through a ton of study with that, so really, um, you know, anyways, I just think that we can really benefit from that partnership. I'm, I'm thrilled to hear that, and um, I, I noticed the ELA scores, and that's like, wait, I actually even said the same thing. I'm like, wait, what's happening in Bainbridge? Like, why are their numbers skyrocketing at the same time that ours are going down? And then, um, you know, they're really, and also, but not without also looking at the math, because it's like, what are we all finding? Um, cause I, I just know a bunch of Bainbridge kids and, and they're just, you know, that their parents are asking the same questions. So I just think we can only benefit from that too, so.
I'm also interested in, in seeing eventually some cohort stuff, because I think it's just easier for my, like, personal, personally limited statistics brain to like comprehend, like, this is the same group, and it goes like this. Thank you.
Should we tell Ava now how hard stats is?
Yeah.
I know people from both, and I know why both likes people in both classes.
That's a good resource.
It just gets harder.
It is.
Honestly, yeah.
Yeah. Same thing.
Do you have anything else?
I mean, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would love to get through the budget item, the next item, everybody, I mean, simple rates, it would kind of something between, I'm just kind of like scratching. I'm sorry. Yes, sorry. So, uh, we are motion to find a superintendent in compliance with our all in favor of finding a superintendent in compliance? Please say aye, students.
Aye.
Board members.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So with that is two zero and four to one with the one abstaining. Now I'd like to do the budgeting, budget timeline if we can, and then we'll take a break.
Sure. Provided to you is the budget calendar, budget timeline for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Similar to the last year's document, aside from a couple of items, I'll get to those in a second. Some highlights as always, throughout this process, January to potential adoption at the end of June. Myself and our business services team, Director Adams, Assistant Director Garcia Baller will provide to you, present to you questions, et cetera, as much material of the budget summary that we can provide. February twelfth, we'll provide and discuss, present the enrollment estimate for the district. March twenty-seventh, of course, the property tax document will be presented. April twenty-fourth, a big meeting, least regard to the budget timeline and calendar. We'll have the fund balance projections presented to you for all five funds, our district fee proposal and district court chart. And then May eighth, working with our friends over in HR, our certified classified FTE projections and then also revenue and expansion projections across the board for the district as some of the highlights. One thing I want to bring to your attention is that obviously this is the start of the biennium down to legislature and this is the long hundred and five day session. We anticipate at least the session ending April twenty-seven. If it doesn't, uh, and it goes longer than expected, you'll notice on page two of the backside, we have contingency, April fourteenth and April twenty, or sorry, August fourteen, August twenty-eighth contingency dates for first reading of the budget and then final adoption at the end of August, just, just in case the session runs longer than expected. But once again, we do hope to have the budget adopted on the June twenty-sixth or be at this point. Any questions?
Yeah, so Governor Furis said in his inaugural address yesterday, said that the era of assuming unrealistic growth and revenue is over. So assuming that we can take him at his word and that we will not, you know, anticipate any increases except for IPD. When we passed the three-year budget or three-year contract with MIE four months ago, I didn't hear about any contemplated cuts and at least individually, I didn't sign on to a contract that would require them. What did we look at with with the knowledge that we can't probably expect anything beyond IPD? When we look into headcount and how that intersects with the timeline?
You want to? Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Maybe in regard to what we're looking at for potential cuts for next year?
Well, yeah.
Enrollments or?
Well, I guess assuming that revenue will just be, the increases will just be IPD. Are we anticipating cuts? And if so, were those mentioned when we approved the contract? Because at least I didn't, I didn't hear much about that.
Um, I, we didn't, I, I don't think at that, those meetings that we were talking about specific cuts. I mean, I, I think we know that heading into the direction we're heading, the benefit of having a three-year contract is to allow us to continue to shape, mold and absorb with the current budget. And some of that is whether or not that's legislative relief. I think the new governor has also been clear about trying to invest more into public education as well. And so while it may not be new revenue sources, there might be opportunity for reshifting the budget and education actually getting some more. At the same time, we've had thoughts that I have later on in in the evening, but I'll go ahead and go into it now. Some of the conversations that you've had, that I've had, that we've had around, you know, what fees are we collecting in terms of our students and are we collecting all the fees that that we should for some of the programs moving forward? But in my mind, continuing to reduce our budget in certain areas is always something we have to continue to think about, whether or not that's on the personnel side, whether or not that's on the operations side. You know, that all, that's all part of the budget in my mind.
Yeah, I just hope we can afford the contract that we approved because my understanding is because.
Do we have any idea when in the session, like, education budget is going to be?
This is maybe a question for our interests. Like, is there, is there any rhyme or reason to it? Is what I'm saying? Is it something they think?
I'm sure.
No, I don't think that's, no. Just part of the whole package, I think. It's always like the last day.
Yeah.
Basically. Because it's got to go through all the bills and then it's got to go through appropriations and yeah, on banks and.
Okay.
Jim?
I think we'll know around some of those what they'll call non-budget items, even though a lot of times those cost money. We'll know some of those as it trickles through. Whether or not that might be a minor hinge to a policy or procedure, but the dollars were going to go all the way up until the eleventh hour, I think.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I, I will only add that I am happy and just interested to see how well the legislature will, will come. Now that also any mandate or any new law or anything cannot be if it's not, it has to be clear on what is going to be the cost and if it's a problem, it's not going to be passed just to ensure that that they're not requesting an extra set of amount of money that we have to invest is something that we are not providing by mistake. So just mentioning that that is a change that is going to happen. And I think it's a good move.
Just regarding this budget document, I just want to say that it's very helpful for me personally to see it laid out this way, sort of like in the chronological view of like what we can look forward to and what we're thinking about when and stuff. And I just want send my appreciation to Director Sol for that. For helping it, lay it out in a way that I can sort of understand how, what we're seeing at each meeting ties into like the bigger budget picture and where we are in the legislature. So, thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that we will, just one other item on related to, you know, fees. Sometimes fees come at the very end, but you know, we are having conversations around fees. For instance, we only collect on the credit card processing fees, we only charge half of what those are. And that's something that we're looking at. That might be a fee that we increase to say that the credit card fees, you know, are passed all on to those. We still collect checks. But we're starting conversations around what those fees might be, which will require earlier conversation with all of you, not waiting until the budget package is coming, just so you're aware. So that would be a slight change, not reflected in there, it's getting into the details, but I just want to make sure that I put on, you know, I am keeping you up to speed on most of this.
Is actual, is it three percent or is it, and we only charge half of that?
I don't know what our fees are exactly. I don't.
I'm just going based on like businesses.
We pass on about half of the fee to said family, students.
It adds up if your child has to get his lunch thing replenished every like week it sees. I don't, I don't disagree with you. I just, I'm going based on like, you know, having to pay tuition. And then it's like, oh, if you want to put on your credit card and get a free airplane ticket, it's going to cost you three percent. So I'm just, it's more curiosity, like, standard is that we're charged three percent? So if we're charging half of that, I would want to know why.
Yeah.
So, or is it actually six percent? I don't.
It's more in the three to the, I don't even think it's four percent.
It's actually.
Three percent. So it's one and a half percent.
Right. I mean, because businesses that pass it on to the consumer, it's they charge the three percent.
So that's good to know.
Yeah.
So I, I'm pleased to check maybe because I cannot connect to the internet. Don't worry. I'm connected to uh, yeah, like certain versions of it. What I was going to say is that Governor Ferguson did also mention that he wanted to provide free lunch and breakfast to all the schools in the state. So that will be a help to all our families. And also I guess I'm ready for the fifth district and how things will change. So the fifth maybe applies to other things that we have to charge in the district, but hopefully that will happen. And I, I think that that is kind of one of the best things to serve this, this around the state. Having best students will make a difference in the classroom. So hopefully that is something in education that it's, it's forward going in that sense.
And if that comes to be, we'll have a lot of nuanced conversations around this though, because our high school isn't on the Department of USDA, USDA. And so, you know, we'll have lots of conversation around what that is and how we want to go forward. But yes, I heard that.
We'll see what happens.
Is everybody okay to take a break now? I would love a break.
I will maybe check my internet.
Yeah. We're going to recess and we will come back at seven fifteen. That's eight minutes, or you guys want seven fifty-five? Seven fifty, eight minute break.
Yeah.
Yeah. The chips are interesting choice. Hopefully, hopefully you got it planned. The company's not watching. Thank you for. Uh, first of all, before we talk about workforce diversification, I just wanted to to say to the students, you guys amaze me every time I'm here. I was thinking about when I was a senior a long time ago, thinking about the classes I took my senior year. And if you would seem to be a lot of PE, contemporary literature, remember I took, but really just my goal is to try to get out as soon as possible, but you guys, you're just amazing. And I know you represent all of the hardworking students up there. And it's just impressive. And I know everybody at least was impressed by what you guys do both here, but also up there. So thank you for being great representatives. I'm here to talk about the workforce diversification update. Um, I think ultimately, we all want the best. We all share common interest of having the best teachers in front of our students, best educators, peer professional custodians. Um, every staff member who wants to be the best. And I think in terms of workforce diversification, I think it's fair to say that we still have work to do. That we are working progress and we're not where we want to be yet. Uh, just a couple, couple of points, because I know you've seen this and Andrew, you could probably go to the, actually just to the last slide, really, I think. Uh, I think you'll see lots of things and you've seen it there. But I think, um, if you look at the bottom left side, bottom left corner, and I know you've seen this. Uh, it's how we compare our staff with our students. Um, here at Mercer Island this year. And I think, as I say, we're not there yet. I think just like you, you have worked with our instructional team over many years on trying to have curriculum that represents our students, that students see themselves in the curriculum. I think it's also viable. We all agree that having students see themselves in the adults they work with is also very important. You'll see probably the biggest gaps in our, um, between our students and staff is our Asian population. Um, we have about twenty, almost twenty eight percent of our students and only represented by eleven percent of our staff. So that's the biggest gap you'll see on there. Uh, the probably the second biggest gap is our Hispanic and Latino. Uh, we, we have about seven point five percent of our students and only about three percent of our staff. So those are two areas that I think we still have work to do on. Uh, other places were pretty similar in where we need either two or more races. That's a little bit hard to decide on how to support that. Because we know that two or more races encompasses so many different groups of of people and different types of students. So obviously, we support some of these other diversity components that the two or more races, I think, uh, will also will also get more aligned to where we need to be. So those are kind of the the things I I was in preparing for this uh, tonight, it was trying to think about the why. What what challenges are we facing? What challenges might we face? When we look at this, though, compared to other East Side districts, we're not out of whack. It's actually very similar. I know Deborah mentioned Bainbridge earlier. Their their demographics are are kind of similar. Uh, they are actually much more of a white population than we are, um, as as Fred has mentioned. Um, over the last year or so, we're we're a more diverse population than we are white in our district. And so continuing to to move in the direction of inclusion of all different ethnicities to to support our students is important. But I was trying to think of a couple of things why. Um, reasons. So there's some some commentary, I think, more than maybe facts is. I think there's a couple of things that that we've noticed and that we can work on as we we proceed future years. One of the things I think I looked at is what what kind of graduates are we getting from education programs? And so I I just pulled out, I looked up Western Washington University, um, where I went many years ago. Uh, and it's interesting that eighty seven percent of the graduates in education with a bachelor's degree are female and thirteen are male, or uh, thirteen percent are male. So I thought that was interesting, that we're not getting a huge amount of males in the um, in the education pipeline. Also at Western, about seventy percent of the graduates in the education department were white. The areas that we were looking for Asian, there was only at Western Washington University around six percent of people that graduated with the education, bachelor's in education were Asian. Uh, this last, the the data I showed, I think, in twenty twenty three. Uh, Hispanic was a little bit higher, but still a real challenge um, to get those type of um, of educators in front of our students. So I think a couple of things. One, we have all these different groups in Western Washington vying for the same diverse applicants. Because everybody has the same uh, goal and mission of trying to get uh, a a varying range of educators in front of their students. I think a couple of things that that we have challenges with and that we're already making steps forward is in a smaller district like us, we have to be a lot more surgical when we hire. We have to sometimes wait a little longer than other districts in order to figure out where we might have needs. And so sometimes we lose candidates just because we're a little bit later in the process. I know that Director Sullivan and his team are upping that process, trying to figure out our staffing numbers, our numbers of teachers, so we can try to move up forward a little bit to try to get some of those applicants before they're snacked up by other people. Uh, I think also, one of the challenges we face is that it it's hard for teachers to live on Mercer Island. Most of our teachers drive through one, two, three, four districts in some cases to get to us. And so they have an option to stop in any of those districts. Uh, I know Director Sullivan's looking at that. He sent out something, uh, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago about some housing in Bellevue that that might appeal to some of our teachers. And I don't know if you want to talk about that, you know more than I do about it. But uh, so maybe some some housing that might be more affordable for our teachers so they can live closer. And so they, that makes our district more appealing. Matt, do you have any details on that?
Yeah, there was a group at Bellevue that Superintendent Rundle introduced me to. I, you know, I had a camp museum, uh, SR.
SRM.
SRM. And they're building affordable units, uh, right in the factory of Bellevue area. I sent a email a couple of weeks ago to our entire district asking for what's setting a survey and links to the units to see who would be interested. If there's a ground swell, we'll speak with SRM and have them come out to the district to present and speak to those that are interested for next year, years to come. And we can keep, uh, obviously, uh, our incredible teachers and provide some affordable housing. So those are some steps that we're trying to take there.
And something I think is sort of exciting about this group is SRM has willing to reserve minutes for M I S P employees. And they're aimed at the Bellevue area, meaning more AMI, which currently, I think that was resolved at a rent around sixteen fifty for a two bedroom apartment, which is much more affordable than they'd be able to purchase here. And at least that was my understanding. So, um, and it would be pretty close to obviously Bellevue, but also Mercer Island. They're willing to reserve some for Mercer Island. And the survey was just to get them, just when we do have interested staff. Um, so I just want to kudos to that group. And I'll go back to Director Sullivan and Superintendent Rundle for reaching out and.
Yeah. So ultimately, I think we still have areas to grow in. I think we we have some steps we're trying to take to make this district uh, as appealable as possible to candidates, the best candidates possible, so we can get them working with our students um, in the short and longer term. So any questions or comments?
Just to say that I think, um, speaking as a person who's interested in all kinds of, you know, representation, but like looking at the Asian numbers, we're doing really well. It's Washington State. It's like two point seven percent of public school teachers identifies Asian. So the fact that we're even, you know, almost half of the percentage of the students, um, is actually pretty impressive. So.
Yeah.
I'm also optimistic that someday the label will open and that will also be just in the in the equation of, yeah, wild and crazy dreamer that I am. Um, but then, of course, we'll have to solve the the last mile problem, right? You know.
Right. I'm sure our transportation department won't mind that. We can borrow those the kids' e-bikes.
Too soon.
Look at that house for them tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, there's that. Questions?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Can I just mention something? Any kind of question? I think that's always an observation that I I I think that I need a little more information. Um, I know that in the past, you always collect races and the Hispanic portion has ethnicity. And I keep saying that, um, you can be white and Hispanic, you can be black and Hispanic, you can be mixed race, have a little more and be Hispanic. So the number is there. I don't know if you might you might be surprised that if you put them apart, it might be bigger or maybe shorter. So so just mentioning that, uh, I would love a little more clarification on exactly how that counts. If you are counting as a city, I know that says change to the set that the government sets, who's not the the school to have it as a race instead of, I think, it changes periodically depending on on um, politics, I guess, depending on how they're doing things, uh, decide, uh, through history, I will say. Uh, but the district has done it as ethnicity. So you can be mad if there's a lot of, so so we just it might give you a surprise or maybe some fling, not, um, just thinking, uh, it's an observation. But it was just.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Thank you. Fred, are you going to say something? Thank you.
Thanks. We have, um, post monitoring language review for thousand eight hundred O E three of treatment of community members.
Um, in, or at the last meeting, you had asked us to go back and add in students, um, uh, receiving I M P services and through special services, special education, and then five oh fours in addition to the other demographics as it relates to discipline. And so this is just reflective of the language moving forward that in O E three, we will now also collect the discipline on those two, um, demographic categories. They're not just on gender, race, as I think. So that's what we're capturing. Anything else to that, Michelle, that you think we should remind them of?
No, they just updated the language for current voters because it formally said a five, a four year look back and we updated to five years. That's what we've been doing. Questions or comments? Yep. You need to vote on this?
Yes.
Um, so we are, um, findings, we're finding the district in collections.
Uh, you were just approving the policy.
We're just going to pause it. Okay. We already said, okay, uh, all in favor of a. Sorry.
I I move that we approve the updates to, um, board policy eighteen hundred O E three as posted to the agenda.
And I second. Thank you. Okay. Um, students. And board members.
I.
Any post, any abstaining? That's two zero five zero. Um, okay, next is board policy twelve fifty, students on governing board is student representative.
Okay, yeah. Um, we had our another SSA meeting last Wednesday. And there we went through, um, survey results that we sent out to our new students. We got like sixty seven responses across the middle and high school. And we had a lot of productive conversations about potential projects we want to have. And we definitely did talk about all what happened down at the middle school. And took some time to have some conversation, conversations and feedback around that. And we hope to, um, incorporate that into what we like do with the data. Um, yeah, more coming as we have more.
Moving on to elementary. Uh, we have a lot of fun things going on during the holiday season at all our elementary schools. Um, Island Park Student Council hosted a toy drive with the goal to collect at least a hundred toys for children and families staying at the children's hospital. Uh, they collected in excess two hundred and fifty plus toys for the drive, um, which exceeded their goal by a ton. So it's a movie from Island Park. Well, the Island Park Student Council also held a winter celebrations assembly, which highlighted different winter traditions celebrated throughout the school community. Uh, they have been planning lots of assemblies and spirit days for the school, which is quite amazing. Similarly, Lakewood also ran a culture five project during lunches where students could learn about different cultures. The Lakewood Steel Band Choir also performed at lunchtime for their fellow peers and had their winter concert in the evenings as well. Grovewood Choir and Drum Mallet Club performed for students and families as well. So so many great music programs for our elementary schoolers, um, who are so richly funded by our community. It's really amazing.
And other demonstrations of great art changes our community has given to elementary schoolers are chances to meet with community members and have other hands on learning opportunities to supplement like their structured curriculum. For example, in Northwood first grade class, learned an important life skill of sewing along with parent volunteers. And additionally, City Manager Bessie Jesse Vaughn and Emergency Manager Amanda Kever Camp discuss discussed with fourth graders at West Mercer how the city works and plans for disasters. And this connected to the current unit where students are exploring how the government influences the way we live. Additionally, School Resource Off, Resource Officer Olivia Fan visited second graders at Island Park to for a unit on identifying community helpers. And MI resident Jane Meyer Bram spoke to second graders at Northwood about the history of Mercer Island. Additionally, when West Mercer had its two hour power outage, the fifth grade orchestra group did arrive at school at the usual time. So they did end up staying at the school and playing games and a parent bring, um, hot chocolate. And they did have a good time of that couple of hours of the day if it's fair. And then in addition, students have taken part in the hour code, which were supported by each of the school's amazing tech coaches. And connecting learning to winter festivities, some students also participated in a hibernation celebration, which is where they connected their science unit to around hibernating animals, to reading. And they made their own habitats, drinking hot cocoa and read books. It looks really cozy and jealous. I mean, you should do that at the high school. And we also have heard a lot of great general appreciation for specialist classes from our students on SSA who are really appreciative of their art, PE, music, and library classes, and really appreciate this way to engage further in school.
Yeah, related to learning in a variety of ways, Northwood has also started having, starting to do something similar to West Mercer's Wolf Pack. Um, they call it Fish Bowl, which involves different students working and learning in small groups. Elementary students also started rehearsing for their fourth and fifth grade plays, in particular, West Mercer is doing Lily Wonka. And once we learn what the other elementary schools are doing, we'll definitely report that. Uh, moving on to the middle school, the antisemitism and violence in the middle school was definitely hard to hear about for everyone in the community and in schools. Um, but we did hear from our middle school students on SSA that people were generally very respectful about it. Um, and due to interest in addressing hate classes like these, a decent exercise for the middle schoolers, creating a no hate, no place for hate club, similar to the club at the high school, which is great to hear. Um, I M H L's club also hosted a large conversation event where high schoolers spoke with M I S, M I S students and district staff about the hate crimes that occurred in the community. Coming back from break, middle schoolers also said that the fall C M no workover break was generally upheld in their schools. And the middle school had their first, um, musical rehearsal for this, and the two student co directors of the former eighth grade put in a lot of workover break for this assignment.
And in addition, before break, the I M S choir band orchestra had their winter concert, which is a great time for all the students across the, um, performing arts to get together under the middle school. And we do want to say a huge congrats of, people probably probably saw that the seventh and eighth grade orchestras did get recognized um, for the National Association for Music Educations, um, all Northwest Conference, and we'll be going there performing in February in Spokane. Um, in addition, the leadership class hosted a charity fundraising fundraising event where students brought one dollar to enjoy a cup of hot cocoa and all proceeds went to the St. Jude's Children's Hospital. And in addition, um, high schoolers, council, high schoolers, counselors and teachers from press went down to middle school to share registration info, what to expect in the high school, and answer questions about high school workload and stress. Um, as eighth graders were starting to register for their high school classes. And the middle school has also implemented a new bathroom monitoring monitoring system where there are now more structured rules for bathroom passes. Um, according to our students from SSA, and they also said that this has been going pretty well and, um, has organized the process of using a leading class to use Russian a little bit more.
Then for the high school, um, DECA competed in their area three competition and had tons of people going. Um, second members qualified for state DECA during this competition. We had fifty five people qualify for state from hospitality and tourism to business finance and food service marketing, which is great to hear. So so that was a huge success. So thank you to all the parent volunteers and teacher chaperones. So so that was a huge success. So thank you to all the parent volunteers and teacher chaperones who helped me to come and get work. Drama has also started working on their new show Puffs. This show is a remake of Harry Potter from a different perspective. Um, our broadcasting program has also been nominated for thirty national awards for the interprivileged broadcasting system. All three MIHS teachers were nominated for best faculty advisors. KNIH was nominated for best radio show and MIHS TV was nominated for best TV station. Numerous other students have also been nominated for their own awards in respective categories, including things like best logo, best documentary, best feature story and many more. The Asian music program, a project designed for music to refugee camps, has been honored by the Hershey's Heartwarming Projects. So three MIHS students, Dennis Volatov, Elits, Yaroslav Zvinsky and Leo Solotornia um who helped the, who helped lead this project, so into the week in Ukraine, delivering instruments to refugees. And so they're being recognized at this ceremony. Um, Silver and Penguin, the freshman robotics team at the high school, also won the latest team into robotics competition. Uh, this is incredibly especially incredible. It's the power trade off during this tournament. So we are very proud of them for adapting to these tournaments and still winning the tournament.
And then the high school has also created a quarterly quarterly student award called the Snail Blazer Award. And this is where where five students from each grade are nominated by teachers and awarded for their integrity, perseverance, creativity and responsibility. And they each get a T-shirt, T-shirt certificate and gift card donated by the PBSA. And there we are with Herbert the Snail. Um, the ultimate prison team has also had a great season and they went nine one in division play, earning a spot in the varsity period of sound conference. And they also earned a spot in the state playoffs for the first time in history. So that's really great to see. And then eight or or eight orchestra students have also been selected to play in the W M E A All State Orchestra. And five choir students have been selected to be playing in the all Northwest Choir Ensembles. So we have a lot of great fine arts students. And then the choir has performed at the Mercer Island Holiday Lighting and Ben Orchard did their joint winter concert, which is also a great success.
Students at the high school also reported that there was a little homework on the break. So it's always good to see that teachers are giving students to students time off to enjoy their break. Um, press teachers, Carney Thompson and Patrick Grady have also developed a project based learning uh program for students about ethical uses of AI in the classroom. So it's great to see your school adopting curriculum to using technology as we saw in our presentation here. Um, and the horticulture class at Crest is also the most is also supposed to be with your plants. So this Saturday from ten to three, they have a variety of posplants of all levels of needs for care. Um, and then I just cheer also attended their first competition of the season this past Saturday at Cape Harbor and they did well enough to qualify for the state championship. So it'll be great to see them there. Um, girls also hosted their elementary dance clinic this week and which will conclude the halftime performance for the girls' basketball game tomorrow. Um, speaking of basketball, both of our teams are also doing really well. Boys' basketball is currently seven eight and the girls are four nine. Girls' gymnastics is also being posted, having just had their season at yesterday.
And in addition, the material science class went to lawless forge to get blacksmithing experience after their unit on medals in medal origin. And um, yeah, there they are. This is enriching enriching experience allowed the class to put their work to practical use. And then Rick Riz, the lead voice of the Mariners Play by Play, visited the advanced radio broadcasting class last week. And he talked to the class about his career path and was interviewed on Breakfast on the Bridge um for radio. And in addition, the students ended up talking to Stagger, which is an outside grading equity organization that evaluated our school back in the fall about grading equity. And students discussed things like extra credit, retakes and homework and how um consistent it is across different teachers. And the Senate also heard from Olivia Pham, who was one of the school resources officers that went to the elementary school. Um, who to talk about e-bikes and e-bike safety. And also urged the Senate to join the effort to educate students more about this. And then the Senate might be tackling a campaign on that later. Um, yeah.
Yeah, but you said um school funding town hall was also a big success. Um, we had some students from the school attending and our school newspaper also ended up going to the town hall. So let me see article from them there. Um, Incritters also recently had the chance to visit the high school on Monday, this Monday um to learn more about the school before they are going to register for their courses soon. Um, so they got tours of the school from various high schoolers, got were able to answer questions about courses. So hopefully they'll be able to make good informed decisions about what they register for next year. Um, and then we just PTA is also partnering with Qdoba today to raise money for the class of twenty twenty five's graduation. Uh, so there's still a few hours left. So anyone who needs to enter can go to Qdoba. Twenty five percent of the proceeds will go to the graduation.
And then in addition, we did start an Instagram um MI school board reps. And we will be posting information about like different things to help educate the students about and community members about whatever issues we have or the issues, things discussed in the community. And yeah, look at all those followers. I know. Well, we did go through the the Mercer Island High School Instagram and like mass follow, but yeah. It's a good strategy. So that's how we get people to follow the account. My cats have an Instagram.
So a a a couple of thoughts. And thank you for that um update. One, just thinking about the incidents at the middle school, um, since you brought up in that phase. For me, when I was in middle school, in seventh grade, Schindler's List came out. And I remember going to it and watching the theaters. Um, it makes an impact. When you see where hate speech can lead um to genocide. And I need a conversation for a later time for the board. But is when we show the graphic reality of where hate speech can lead. And perhaps because of being overly sensitive to showing traumatic imagery. Um, there isn't the same weight um or appreciation for the gravity of hate speech. Um, so that's maybe just sort of my thoughts on on the middle school and sort of going forward in the role of the board. Um, with respect, you know, to whether there's a funding crisis or if it's an accountability crisis. I think that's TBD, but I think it's far from a fact that there in fact is a funding crisis.
Do you wanna, do you have more to say? Or do you want to state it further?
No, no, I mean, just like it can say it is a, it is a fact. And I'm saying, I think it it the reason articles, it's in parentheticals or quotation marks is I think that is the discussion.
Yeah, can I mention something? First, I will say that this is the highlight of the meeting.
Absolutely. Yeah.
School and all the students are doing. So thank you for doing that. And and the only question I could adhere very well is you said that the crest is doing the fun still.
Yes.
Yeah, like it it it's not spring. Oh, my God, this is all going so fast. I'm like, okay. So this is good to know. I didn't know that. I I thought that was only a spring.
I think this is new.
It's new. I mean, yeah, it's newer. I don't remember if we did it last year or not, but it is a newer.
So so we have a winter and maybe maybe a a spring one. So I have to go on. So is this weekend or you said?
Saturday.
Yeah. Now I have to put in my calendar.
Moving on, we have board policy eighteen hundred OE nine communication as a court to the board. That is the superintendent's recommendation on next year's non-resident enrollment. President's Board Policy forty one.
Thank you. Um, E, F and G um kind of go together. So I want to first kind of give you a um update and and kind of with what I'm thinking about recommendation. F will then be your opportunity to extend, if you would like, uh, the interlocal agreement, allowing city residents uh or excuse me, city staff members to bring their children to the district. And then G returns back to um making action um on my recommendation. So I'll start off with the recommendation. Um, entries, if you can just pull up the presentation. And if you'll go straight to slide uh in the fifth slide. The second set of our graphs. Um, not a lot of change to this slide at all, but I start here. Um, you've seen some of those others, um, but I just wanted to kind of show once again, you know, where are we trending and and, you know, what is influencing my thinking? When I've talked to our middle school team, I've talked to our high school team, um, where do we feel like we want to uh at least maintain? And with our high school, we've talked about trying to be right around three hundred fifty uh per class. That keeps the school around fourteen hundred students. Um, I think that that's a strong three A school that's representative um of the structure we have, the the offerings we um have. And um, I think creates that predictability over time. And speaking with our middle school team, um, and thinking about the facility there around nine hundred fifty. So somewhere in that three hundred ten to three hundred fifteen per class range um is what we're kind of thinking there. The good news is uh we're starting to see that trend each year that between fifth and sixth grade, we're getting more students. Between eighth and ninth grade, we're getting more students. Um, but I think we have to be very sensitive to that then when we're making projections around open enrollment, uh, because the first priority are to the students who live here. Um, what I am definitely noticing, and you can see this graph, is we're kind of now heading into the second year of those smaller classes and in elementary, coming to the middle school, obviously that sixth grade classes um lower than our both our seventh and eighth grade classes. And that's remembering that we did pick up some students um this year as well. And then if you'll go back to one previous slide. As a reminder on that, um, you know, we have thirty seven new students, albeit we also lost nineteen, but you know, that's one of those years where we see growth. So if we go back to the um graph there, you know, anticipating our fifth graders moving in, I think we can anticipate we're going to get some more. Um, but what this gets me to is the next slide. And that is, um, I did make a couple of adjustments here, but I'm thinking that between fifth and sixth grade, um, we probably have room for um students there. And so last year we just did eight through twelve. Um, knowing that that fifth grade class coming in is going to be um smaller. Uh, I think there's some opportunity there in sixth grade, um, some opportunity in seventh grade. But in speaking with the middle school, um, you know, we're really hitting already our mark in eighth grade. And we don't want to be in a place again with our core classes being impacted. So I put zero to five, but in our most recent conversations with um uh with uh Mr. Miller, uh, you know, we're really looking at kind of that zero right now until we get a sense of new enrollment. And then, as you can see, rolling up, we do anticipate more ninth graders. And so there's not a lot of room at the high school. We're kind of where we want to be at the high school. I say thirty to forty, um, it may not come into that. It could come lower. Um, I think there's less uh capacity in eight through twelfth grade this year than we had last year. Um, meaning that, you know, with the capacity we can open in sixth and seventh, that would start to create a little bit of long term predictability for the middle school and then on into high school. Um, so that that's the um the gist of it. The last slide uh just kind of reiterates maintaining uh the the size of that three fifteen, three ten, three twenty for the middle school and three fifty per class in the high school. So happy to take questions on my thinking or or kind of what what went into this.
If we take in six or six or seven, um, are we committing to them through graduation?
Yes, that's my thinking is that it wouldn't be um that it's not by level, that it's into our entire system.
Is it younger siblings or no?
No.
Would that then impact our uh staff open, what do we call it? The.
Choice transfer.
Choice transfer.
First out.
Yeah.
Does not impact. I mean, that it's accounting for that as well with our staff. Do you mean our staff who bring?
Their staff will bring in if they bring uh what what I always worry about is that we're treating that I want to make sure that we're treating our staff the best and have the most opportunities. So the staff member leaves and their student is in sixth grade or seventh, um, would they be able to continue on until graduation?
They can. They would have apply. If you left the district as an employee separated from the district, you could apply um for that definitely if you.
And would there, is there, would, is there a way to make kind of an expectation?
That they can stay no matter what?
Right. Like like we do, like the expectation, obviously, aside from any problems, whatever, that like if we're making that commitment to students who come under regular open enrollment.
Right.
Can we then also do that with our choice transfer?
It's a little easy. Yes, it's a little easier because we've already accounted for those students anyway. So they're in our numbers um as we look at that. Um, I will tell you that it's just super rare that usually when someone's leaving the district, they are moving further away and they're they're heading out. So it does, it it could come up. It just doesn't that often.
And I guess like following up on that would just be staff, but would be residents who go to Mercer Island. I mean, if you were sixth or seventh grader now, but your family decides to leave to go to Bellevue, but would like to maintain those relationships.
Yeah.
It would seem an odd scenario in my view that someone who came here who had no connection to Mercer Island prior to that would have a more secure spot than someone who may have been in our system from kindergarten through sixth grade.
You bet. Um, this is the world of Michelle right now, um, as she's working through all of that. And yes, um, absolutely, we do have, uh, work gets trickier as elementary because we're not um open there. And so, you know, we are working with some families who are, you know, thinking about moving, but sixth through twelfth, much easier conversation. Yes, absolutely. You want to add to that at all or what you're seeing from requests that are starting to come in?
No, because we're just starting to get them. So I don't think there's any bad at this point.
Yeah.
So the um, the current students who are in our system through open enrollment, they stay in the system.
Yes.
So this isn't like, oh, we have zero to five spaces. So. Um, but we're still anticipating potentially opening in the sixth and seventh grades to help balance out our middle school calculation.
Exactly.
I guess I'm glad to see the numbers are so low because it means we were pretty close to the numbers we wanted already. And it just, I think, should be reassuring to people who might be worried that we're just kind of opening up like gates. Students coming in. It's nice to see that it's a controllable process.
And we had that conversation and I think um we were, I I think, all headed in that same direction last year when we said, you know, this is not an attempt to try to solve any budget shortages and whatnot. This is to try to really smooth out the transition so that we can maintain program, maintain offerings um and create predictability with staffing as we're moving forward. So, you know, we don't need wild swings. That's not where this is going to be. I met with realtors this morning uh in our kind of, you know, quarterly meeting with our realtors. And inventory is still a big issue. Uh, they said kind of back in the, you know, pre-COVID, um, and when interest rates were lower, you know, three hundred and fifty homes uh being sold on the market and sold each year was pretty normal. Um, and now they're down to, what was the number? Twenty, two twenty twenty. Um, and so, you know, inventory is going to be, you know, that's a huge challenge. Sometimes it's not just students wanting to be here, but being able to move here. So um, you know, we'll continue to monitor that as well and keep great partnerships.
Uh, I just want to mention that um we had to to interact a lot with the Bellevue School Directors and uh his school directors. And while the conversation came out of enrollment, and there was one of the reasons that they said that have done very well, uh, just what they they said. Uh, is that opening for for the whole middle school made a lot more sense because of the stability of the students and the development together and arriving at eighth grade, which is when it's already challenging and then making friends and going forward. So it having them completely working with their same curriculum and the way that they will adapt was a better transition for the student and their academic career, especially having them from eighth grade, which was a very uh, I understand their point, like their curriculums might be different across districts and the way that the district has to work with that to make sure that they are uh also uh as the academic standard that they need to be and 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 to help them along. So so um it was a window to what they need to say. And I think that that uh makes sense to me in that sense that that it really uh if we're thinking on any student, like whoever, doesn't matter if they're Mercer Island or if it's one of the opener rooms or it is a a bit of our uh staff, we have to make sure that their academic career is is stable. And uh what they can achieve through uh while the past in our district. So. And uh what they can achieve through uh while the past, you know, the district. So. Yes.
Yeah, and yeah, I just wanna agree with all the said is, like, we should definitely, if we accept a student in sixth grade, they commit with. Commit to them throughout their career until they graduate high school. Um, as, yeah, especially for teachers and uh Mercer Island, like. Uh, s- staff, like people who work for the city, um, that's really important.
So then the last piece of information kind of influencing our thinking is the other slide presentation um on here. If we can go to that, Andrew, I think it's the. Yeah. Uh, we wanted to, you know, we've talked about who were the students who arrived or who came through open enrollment, and we wanted to give you a little bit more. Um, detail um on that. And so if we go down to the slide that's titled total non-resident students. Um, this really starts to capture um who, you know, who. Who, who are the families who are choosing to open enrollment? You can see full-time staff. Um, there, you know, represents our largest uh amount of of uh open enrollment, followed by the non-residents who came in last year. And then you can see that there's um eleven in that kind of part-time staff. Last year, you added coaches as an opportunity, uh substitutes and some of the others. So that's capturing. Um, some of those um students there. And the next um one, we have total non-resident families uh uh representatives. We had forty-three non-resident families. Um, it was interesting that most of our students who came uh with families, it was just a single student. We weren't getting siblings, and that's different than our staff who tend to bring two or three children uh to the school district. But um most of our non-residents uh brought one student. Um, and then. The next one is, you know, there's a lot of questions that I think you received potentially in the community, um, and we were asked, you know. How can we deny or or what do, uh, you know, what does the denial process look like? So we wanted to give you an idea. Um, last year, we denied seven um because of the uh ele- elementary level. Um, four where they probably started the application process and then just didn't finish it and. Um, probably made different decisions. We had three, um, as you recall, you know, once we started hitting where we had our numbers in eighth grade. We capped it. Uh, and then we had two with attendance concerns. Um, and then one, we weren't uh open to sixth and seventh grade. Um, our communication, uh, we continue to try to be very clear with all the families, very consistent. Uh, and the website that uh that Michelle maintains, uh, trying to make sure we're. Being very forward-facing to the community, both internally but also externally as well. So I think we learned a lot from the first process last year. Um, I think being very strategic is important. Uh, and that's why my recommendation is such, so.
Can I ask a question about, my my question is, uh, when I'm looking at, you know, ninth grade. Limited access to electives, tenth grade, limited access to honor AP courses, blah blah. Is that for their first year only that there's gonna be limits? And then once they're a mature student, they're they've got the same.
Exactly, yeah, because then we can staff differently for it usually by then or it moves, but. Um, you know, we want to be honest with a family who's looking to apply mid-year. That, uh, you know, if you come and you're making that choice, do know that. We may not be able to accommodate your first or second choices for electives or what that might be.
Just because of the timing?
Timing, class is already full, class, you know, we're already at, you know, in the, you know, we've kind of hit where we want to be with certain classes.
So if a family applies like before, the classes are determined or do they still have all access?
Yeah, so these are more the ones who want to come in mid-year or right towards the end. We update this throughout the summer to say, hey, you know. Do realize, um, you know, just to be transparent.
So I'm hearing mostly. Like supporter, this like, yeah, this is not something we vote on.
It's, it is in G. You don't vote on this part, but.
Right.
So yeah, this is just information.
As far as the overall approach goes, I'm not. First off, so.
Um, F then is, do you want to uh move forward and continue with the ILA uh with the city? It was a two-year agreement the first time around. I think there was some, you know, uh. Caution that you had as awarded, rightfully so, about, you know, this was the first time we were gonna do it. And so we set it at two years and those two years are up, so it's coming back.
Yeah, I would say from my perspective, I am very proud of the ILA. And it shows that there are many different ways. Wanting forward to connection in our community. Um, and it recognizes that. It's not just. Living here and where you sleep at night and where you work during the day. Um, someone who lives off of North Mercer Way, I've seen um the sewage updates. I'm putting in the sewer line and like the construction workers and in, right now, unfortunately, they were, they're not included under the ILA. But also I go to Luther Burbank Park a lot, um, and see all the city workers that maintain it. And I very much feel that they're part of our community. Um, and uh they had my total support. I would like to see it expanded. Uh, beyond the current parameters today. It may be something we could revisit at a future board meeting. Uh, but certainly what we have, uh, and then perhaps build on it in the future.
We'll say that I echo what you have said. I absolutely agree. Uh, it's our community and also, uh, uh, so we have had always a great partnership with the city. And this is part of we being part of a partner and and absolutely and agreed with the parameters, I think that there's there's.
Just want to also echo what Dan said. I mean, I agree. Ever consentable?
Um. Yeah, I I knew that we uh approved of the renewal of the non-resident enrollment agreement with the city posted as item. Uh, five app on the agenda.
Next, I go. All in favor of approving the renewal, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Word members?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? That is two zero, five zero. And then G?
And so G is using my recommendation from. Uh, the earlier discussion is putting it into what an updated policy would look like, which is thirty-one forty-one. Enrollment of non-resident students, and so it's incorporating my recommendations uh in the policy for your consideration.
This is just the enactment of what we were thinking about before, so. So they learn English.
I move we um approve. The proposed enrollment uh. Update.
Okay, second. Thank you. Um, okay, all in favor of of approving the proposed enrollment update? Please say aye, students.
Aye.
Word members?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
And anybody abstaining? So we are two zero. Four one, with the one being a nay. Right. Next, we have the consent agenda. Definitely.
Uh, I move that we approve it as an agenda as posted.
Second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye, students.
Aye.
Word members?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? That's two zero, five zero. Uh, superintendent report.
Great. Um, let me start off with the pro con committee. Um, now that uh you have. Uh, approved a uh the resolution for a bond. Uh, we need to move into the next phase, and that is, you know, putting the bond. Uh, and working through the county to get it into uh the county's hands so that they can get it on the ballot in April. And part of that process is the voter pamphlet. Uh, that goes out to all the voters, and that's a pro con committee. Uh, the appointment for a pro con committee uh comes from you, and we need to start the process of gathering um. Community members who want to write that pro con. So I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle. She's really been working uh behind the scenes. Uh, making sure that we're on track here, and so let Michelle walk us through.
So the presentation is mostly for the, for community members to look at, uh, but it does specify sort of. The district's responsibilities and uh the commitment of people that would be interested in sending them. And essentially, uh, we can accept community members for a vote, they need community members for a con committee. They must be Mercer Island residents. That's, I don't know how new that is, but that was not the case in the past. Um, that's New Lincoln County elections will actually confirm everybody's residency, just so the public knows that. And um, the responsibility of the committees is to draft uh statements in favor of and opposition to the bond. And uh optionally to draft their battle statements. And they need to follow um. Certain forwarding requirements and certain deadlines. Uh, the district's responsibility is to provide information to them so they're, they can meet those deadlines. And uh, it's only three people, uh, although any number of people can assist. One person will be designated as a spokesperson and that person will actually have their contact information published in the local voter's pamphlet. Uh, anybody else that wants to submit an application, their information, it isn't published, but it would be accessible. To people if they make a public request, just so the public knows that. Uh, it's also the the district's responsibility to advertise, uh, to recruit members, so they'll do that here. We'll also post it on the website, social media accounts, open ad in the reporter. And uh, bench public cover. And. Okay, that works. Oh, yeah, well, the timeline is supposed to be here, so uh people know what they'd be committing to. We, as a district, need to um submit the appointment form, um, appointing those committee members. No later than February twenty first. So, um. Maybe before if we want to get them one important days to prepare their statements. But uh, I think, I think that's about it. I might have deferred it right for the timeline.
Yeah, I I think, uh, Director Golds, you had a great question earlier on around, you know. Relative to this timeline, then what's, what should your timeline be for the appointment? Um, we run into a little bit of challenge here because we also hit it in the midwinter break. Uh, when people are away, and so one possible option is to. Uh, look for interested parties, um, and then be ready for your January thirtieth. Meeting and at that point you make the appointments. Or you can wait till your next uh meeting. It's not set in stone, but let me turn it over to Director Golds. I think you were the one who raised that question.
Yeah, I mean, yes, what, and I guess I shall confirm this. So this appointment just needs to happen by the resolution deadline, which is February twenty first. So my thoughts is to encourage civic participation, should be open as long as possible. Um, understanding that's coming up against the like the midwinter break, so I would. Encourage us to to keep it open at least through. I guess the ninth of February, because we have a meeting coming on the twelfth, but then that just becomes a question. I don't know. Is, is it the board that appoints like the members from the community? And and then what happens? If there happens to be more than three individuals? I mean, for instance, I mean, I was just thinking of like. It seems that you usually get people who are for, who are actually for, and people who are against, who are actually against. But what if you get someone who's against who applies for and then just, you know, sort of sinks the for statement? Or vice versa?
I think that's why there's one person in charge.
Well, well, it's the reason selection becomes important, because three individuals who are against the bond say, hey, like, we're applying. You know, for the for side, but we're just gonna do a really bad job advocating for that position or vice versa. Right?
Yeah.
And that's the reason, the question of the board's role. In the case that there are more than three individuals, and then irrespective. What I think is keeping that application window open as long as possible.
I think, I think you want to keep it as long as possible, but you also do have to be mindful of of winter break, and that a lot of families go away, and so it may be hard for people to meet or. Coordinate if they have this deadline of the twenty first. Is the twenty first one, the thing has to be submitted or the twenty fifth?
It's whether it's committee has to be appointed. I mean, I would.
But that's the end of winter break is the twenty first, so then everybody's like getting back. It really only leaves people a few days, so.
I would assume though that people that are writing for or against, they're gonna have their arguments well in advance of being. Appointed as the committee members. I mean, I would think that would be a simple.
I think that's a fun play. Some perspective on that from us being. The spouse of someone who's been on the pro cons before, so my wife has um written these. And if you get three people, i- if you select three people, let's say, to the con committee who've never met before, they don't know one another. They then have to figure out, they may have different reasons, and they have only have two hundred words. And they have to figure out how to come up with that. And so. It might be, if it was one person, I think you're right, Director Golds, but if you have three people who don't necessarily know each other, it can be a little bit challenging. And, you know, so giving people some time to be thoughtful about writing it, um, I think is also important. Um, as part of the the civic process.
And is that ultimately a board decision in terms of the appointment?
Yes.
So what about, what about February sixth when we're meeting? Anyway, we have the the city council and the schools foundation? Like.
Why not the twelfth?
Because it leaves a little time. Like, if people are leaving town on Friday. And then they don't know each other and you want them to work together, like, I don't see the benefit of of keeping it open an extra week. If it deprives them of time to actually do the work that they're supposed to do together. I mean, February sixth would leave them with, with the public three weeks to, I mean.
Three weeks is a fair amount of time.
Yeah.
We're advertising.
For advertising and becoming.
Social media. Gives everybody plenty of time to think about applying. Like, I can't imagine the application, just like. A few sentences, I mean, it's not a lengthy application.
Can't imagine.
Yeah, I would, I would just encourage the board to do this. Yeah, I would just encourage the.
I just think three weeks is very interested to help on it. And if if there's not enough interest, if we can't get three people for each side by. By by February sixth, then we can always extend it a week. It gives us that flexibility, right? We can examine it to the twelfth. And then send out the word again and be like, hey, hello, we only have two people per committee, like.
You convinced me, you convinced me.
So let me make sure we're hearing this correctly.
Except that I, speaking as a person who voices up during the last minute, I try to. Speaking of someone who will be away for February.
So you want to make the appointment on February sixth, is that what you were saying?
Okay, if we can just add it to our.
So the deadline would then be the fifth, because it's just a list of names, right? That would be them considering.
The fourth, so that people can look over the. Things, I don't.
There, there is a space in the form, which I forgot to add. There's a form um that you can link to at the end of the presentation. But there is a space for people to make a statement, a short statement about why they want to be on the committee.
So for me, I would love it to be the fourth because I, Wednesday's my super long day and I don't have time in the evening to like review, you know, like. A list of ten statements I'm gonna be doing at last minute or.
That's more.
Yeah, thank you.
What about, yeah. I mean, is there an obligation to have? I mean, I've seen things without.
They, they can go without it. I mean, you could get, you know, one side or the other where you don't get anyone and then it just runs without it. Um, what you have to, what we have to demonstrate as a district is that we made a good faith effort to gather, um.
Yeah, I think there is some additional updates from the, from just January first, where if we don't get anything, then. A county, some functionary puts out an online notice and then sort of opens it up, uh, which is new.
It's by the twenty first. By, if we, when we submit the appointment form, if we don't have one, if we don't have anyone to put on it.
Yeah.
Then we would let them know and tell King County Elections all of our recruitment efforts, and then they would make their own.
And that's sort of that, right?
Yeah, and why, I, I think why they went to, you have to be a resident of the areas, you know, they were getting. People who were just writing pro cons from way outside of of communities where they weren't really, they had a vested interest, I think. So, okay. Um, a couple other uh announcements. Michelle, thank you um for helping and shepherding that portion of the process. Um, a couple other things that I want to bring your attention. We already talked about fees. Um, and a conversation there. Um, at the last meeting, we talked about Resolution six eighty-one, the Sustainability and Environmental Stewardship. I said that I would go and at least clean the document up and get current language around our fundamentals, and I have done that. And so um I'm looking for, um, I guess guidance or or I guess recommending. Are two of you gonna then take a look at that and come back with suggested language? Um, how do you want to take the next step? So I'm ready to share that with whatever group wants to head forward with this. Um, I, it, it wasn't quite as in-depth as I thought it was gonna be, so it's not a lot, but.
I mean, I'd be happy to volunteer myself, just, you know, take a, take a look at it.
Great. So I will send my updated language that's redlined to the two of you. and then you can bring that back to the board whenever the submitted to the board chair, vice chair.
Okay.
Okay, um, that's. Um, you might have seen, and I'm gonna have this in your board update this week, uh, the OSBI has been charged to take a look at the SCAP funding model. And uh, they are reaching out in a number of ways trying to gather information, I believe it's through a thought exchange. You might have received it through OSBI today, I've received an update, I also received it through an organization called A Better SCAP dot org. So there's lots of people directing people to participate in this thought exchange, which is gonna go to OSBI, and then OSBI has been charged with making a recommendation to uh, to the uh, legislature. So, one is just flagging, excuse me, to your attention, two is, I don't, I haven't even seen that thought exchange, I did not have time to open it. Um, you might want to look at it, I don't know if you want a discussion as a board as to, you know, what that looks like, answered as individuals, but I wanted to flag that because it's been so much of the discussion at your table, long range facility planning, and of course, if we're now moving forward with a bond, um, it's, it's, you know, it's gonna play out. So it's just, it's more just a heads up and something to think about, maybe look at it in the board report, and then be ready to talk about it, so. Um, and then uh, the last piece is previewing uh, with the uh, chair and vice chair. Uh, we have a week from today, uh, we have a study session, it's uh, one of the uh, scheduled study sessions, and so what we are thinking for that, um, and then I'll turn it over to uh, the two of you if you want to add to it. Uh, taking a look and doing some board and governance team development. Uh, there is a former board director from the Clover Park School District who now works with the Covey, the Franklin Covey Institute, around uh, governance teams and team development, and I'll link his bio in the board report this week, um, who we have, who's gonna be able to join us. And then we moved the Mass Action Lawsuits uh, out of your January thirtieth agenda and into the twenty third. So instead of waiting until there, it felt, I think it's gonna fit better for you in a study session. So our partner from Keller Rohrbach uh, will be here to work with us. And then uh, we had talked around another agenda item uh, that had come up last time, uh, and I'll kind of turn it over uh, whether or not the SAT and, and conversation there, so I'll turn it over to the two of you to add any more to that in terms of a preview for next Thursday.
Do you want to add that?
Yeah, so um, I, I talked to Director Golds about this last week, um, and I think I heard enough, sort of like, we didn't quite get to the end of the conversation, enough consensus at the table at our last board meeting, I would really like to look a little more closely at the um, SAT issue. Um, and I think that this could be done in, in sort of two parts, maybe in our study session to come at sort of a common understanding of what inquiry you're making to the um, district, and what our, you know, what, what our interests are in studying this issue, and then I think it would be very useful in a public open session to have, uh, our interregul board meeting, whatever, to have the public as the community, um, hear from the district as to like, sort of, why we haven't offered the SAT, what, you know, what some, and what some options might be. So, but um, I think it might be worthwhile carving out some time in our study session to like, look into this a little further as a board, um, to really direct how we want the district to address it in the meetings, that it um, hasn't become, you know, too, too, too much of a time limit, you know, meeting. And it seems to be a waiting, interesting enough issue that we could, we could look into, I don't know.
I mean, I think at this point, uh, a lot of the community has, has now heard about this issue, whether they have kids who've been trying to keep the SAT or not, so I think we need to. Hear from the staff, so.
Can I, can I, uh, uh, it was part of my, my announcement reports, uh, uh, I don't know if this could be kind of uh, part of a study session, that we could see kind of the path towards college, how does it look like? So that really grew the SAT that now, and in the future, uh, like, uh, and I will say that with the announcement uh, on Monday, the PTA, uh, the PTC from the high school, uh, had an event that it was called the Gailen of a Four Year College Plan, uh, it was for families uh, either new to the American college application process like my, myself, or that they have not gone this, this for a very long time, which is a lot of parents who have not had their kids go through high school yet. It was absolutely fantastic, it opened my, my knowledge of community that we needed to know. And also, um, I think that an understanding of, of some of the concerns that the current affairs were, were, or the struggles that they were having, that maybe it was, maybe it was through, through not knowing how the system worked, or communications, or, or what is happening. So in, in that sense, I think that, that having just an understanding to see from, like, what is happening, and also uh, maybe hearing from other parents, like, where are your struggles? That to make sure that we're, we're uh, helping all the students to, to plan for the future career. If it, if it moves to that four year college plan, that's perfect, and if it doesn't, if it's a, a, I don't know, any, any other future plan, just that, that, but this like the first step to move forward with that, so, so uh, yeah, that was. And I will say thank you for the PTA, it was amazing, it helped me so much, and I live in my eighth grader was absolutely uh, uh, making their plan and everything, right there with all the English that the children say, so, so it was totally worth uh, attending, and I know that the, the district will have a webinar later, um, the same topic, so I sure recommend anybody to uh, uh, that is, anybody, I think that it's going from middle school to high school right now, elementary, my decision. To cha- just check it out, because I think that, that uh, it will help you as a parent, so, yeah.
Um, lastly, just building on that, the high school and beyond plans will be changing uh, across the state. Um, going to a unified um, high school and beyond plan. I don't want to put um, too much excitement behind it or bemoan it at all, I think I am hopeful that it's actually gonna be a tool that we can use with our students. Um, I don't know your feelings on Naviance, uh, you know, and whether or not it's a useful tool, that's really guiding you. What I have heard from our students and watching it through as a, as a dad is, it's really not fulfilling the needs, and it's more of a checkbox, and I think we're trying to get to, to be more than that, but that will start um, next year, but it's a roll up, um, so kids who are already in flow don't have to learn a whole new system, is my understanding. But that can be part of the learning.
My kids were not fans, not, they were very nice.
Big fan, Ava, Lucy.
Um, I feel like, I feel like it gets the job done, as of now, like, the counselors can submit their things, but I think like, it definitely isn't really a tool that, that like helps students like discover more, I feel like, right? It's just like there for like the paperwork, it feels like right now.
Yeah, definitely, I don't want it for the college application process, but for the planning stuff, I have, I find it super useful, especially it's, you only really access it like once a year, so it's not really continually helping you, or it's just not easy to access.
And that's.
Oh, can I just try and, um, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong or if it's changed, but I thought we, when, when SATs was brought up last time, there was not consensus on the board to discuss it further, especially since it wasn't identified as an issue. If that's changed, that's fine, I, I'm certainly not gonna stand in the way.
Joanie and I just, when we were doing our um, agenda planning session, and we're thinking about what to talk about in our um, study session, we were like, this has come up and come up and come up, like, it's probably worth just like taking a look at it.
That, that's just my concern, is that bad behavior and continuing to bring things up is what gets it.
If the intent has changed, that's fine.
But I did just look it up again, and there's still SATs available in Seattle in March, May, and June.
But this is why we want to talk about it, because it's like, it's like, if the reality is there's no coming, then that's the answer, you know? But like, we should at least just look at it.
Tell me again.
And I think it's not, if that's what you decided leadership, that's fine. I think it'll be extremely useful for the community at large to sort of hear, like, I remember when I raised the question uh, at the beginning of the year, the, like, sort of back to school night, um, you know, and, and I asked the person at the testing booth, like, why don't we have the SAT here? And they told me in like three minutes, and then I was like, yeah, that's a really good reason, okay. And then I, I might, I was satisfied, but I think that it's hard for, you know, obviously, the, she doesn't need like five hundred people asking her the exact same question, it'll be a good chance for the community to hear the same explanation of like, why or why not it has been happening, and maybe like, you know, think creatively, we have some options.
And also a chance to kind of clear the air, and we can say that none of us is against the SATs, none of us is like anti, you know, seniors getting to it. Just like, whatever people are accusing us, anyway, um, yeah, yeah, no, no, we all hate the SATs. So, um, we also. She is being sarcastic, yes. Slash S sarcasm, um, we also are thinking that the, the um, uh, thingy will be a little bit shorter maybe than what was calendered, uh, the study session, it may not, and we will know a little more after we talk on Monday to the gentleman that's coming to um, from the Covey Institute, um, but if we, we make it a little bit of time back. Okay.
That's all.
Okay, so we are now legislative report.
Yes, okay, so um, I'd like to, I'm just, I'm gonna do a report, because Christine is going to, we're gonna split it, and then um, a couple of this stuff for my, like, regular board report. Um, so legislative reports, uh, busy times in our legislative, uh, your legislative representatives. Um, obviously, the session has started, um, we did have that town hall on the school funding crisis uh, in January, and um, just to like peel back the curtain a little bit, uh, first off, Christine is pointing on that really, um, from the several weeks leading up to it, but, you know, our PTSA reps, our PTA rep, um, and our students, obviously, and Christine and I spent, we were trying to add it up.
Education Association.
And the Education Association, sorry, um, because they were also partners in that, but spent I, I mean, tens and tens and tens of hours during the holiday break working on this, and attending meetings, and having Zooms, and coordinating with districts, and, you know, like, you have three or four organizations within each district, and then you have five districts, and it was a lot of work that a lot of people put in um, to pull this event together, and uh, you know, a thousand people came, it was, um, I think impactful, but what I would particularly want to draw our attention to and comment today is the work of our students, Lucy and Ava, because they were spectacular, um, really spectacular, like, just, you know, worked with their other two students, um, Julius and Johnny Anderson, Julius and Johnny Anderson uh, from the district, and just worked really hard over break, uh, had, we had calls with them, we had Zooms with them, but also they worked on their own, coming up with questions, imagining the structure for the student portion. And then the day of, um, Ava and Lucy were in charge of coordinating twenty five students from different districts who were not, you know, easily identifiable as like, these are the students that are participating, and these are their roles. So they really had to be creative and thoughtful, and they had a strong eye on like allowing people to participate in an equitable fashion, and um, I just want to appreciate the hard, hard work that these two women have put in, because it, they, they were key in the success of the way that the program went. I mean, they were on stage the entire time, they spoke so well, they managed to divvy up the, you know, more enticing roles for students in a way that felt equitable between the districts and between the students, and um, I know that you, you showed a creative and a possibility the day of, that was really inspiring. Um, and I also want to draw everyone's attention, if you haven't seen it yet, maybe we can get Ian to send it again to the board, but there is a little clip from Ting Five News where Lucy and Ava were interviewed, and they did a fantastic job of um, summarizing the points. Um, and Ian had sent it along, I'm not so sure if it was just to the entire board or just to, to me and Christina, but they did a really, really great job. Yeah, there you go. But uh, they, I think Ava and Lucy just showed this kind of leadership that we're looking for in our, in our students, and um, Christine and I were so impressed and so proud of them the day of. I mean, the entire weeks and weeks and weeks leading up to it, but the day of, um, we thought they did a spectacular job. And moving forward for this, from this town hall, uh, Christine is gonna talk a little bit about like next steps for advocacy, and obviously it's uh, busy, busy times in the legislative session, and um, we also went to the legislative conference, uh, Director Laurie, Director Martinez, me, and Fred, and Ava and Lucy um, went to that conference.
We had a, I was supposed to listen to it.
And then they, and then Ava had to speak again, now that she just loves to sit on the stage and talk in front of hundreds of people, she's all set. Um, so uh, Director Martinez, we're gonna talk a little bit about like next steps, and then they did touch on the conference, because I know that.
That's actually a bit brief, just because of the time, I have to go home, uh, attend something, so, so, uh, but first, uh, uh, I wanna echo, and I really wanna make a standard thing of. I think that I, it's, it's a very, very small room, but I, I'm really in awe of you two. Like, you have shown your leadership in ways that, that I'm really amazed. So, so um, uh, we are absolutely very proud of you. Uh, in terms of next steps, we have been working, uh, uh, like legislative session already started. It is there, and uh, during the conference, uh, uh, and, and I fully agree, this is where we have to be really engaging. And, and they, they recommended uh, that we email almost every week, every day, almost every day, especially every week during the session, I think that the important portion right now is that uh, the education in the House and the Senate are already uh, uh, in committee. They are deciding which bills they're gonna pass or not. So this is a time when they are hearing testimony to see what is worth it or not. So uh, it has been, and I will say that, uh, let me, let me just double check. So the House already started on the thirteen, and we are in the sixteen, so they have only three more dates, the twenty twenty one and twenty three. The twenty is, is, is a, they will be working and doing uh, some, some work on the dedication. Uh, 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 the, the Senate, uh, where is my Senate? Let me see, the Senate is the same, I think that, that, uh, I think they, they, they're not doing on the twenty, but they're doing the twenty first. Uh, and this is when, is that, it's not only uh, your legislators that we have to work, or the students that are, uh, um, it is, I think that it will be worth it to, to have maybe more voices. Um, instead of only us emailing, I think that if we were, could do a partnership with those, with real stories of what is happening, we'll think a lot. In fact, I know we have very little time, because next week that we have to find those stories that will show uh, in the Senate, the twenty, the twenty first is when they're going to talk a lot about NSOC and education, and, and probably will look into a little bit of the statistics if you uh, tonight or tomorrow morning, to see exactly which was uh, our uh, on our priorities, and I know that we on the town hall, we talked about the big three, however, I know that our, our, our priority is a little bigger, uh, in terms of our document, that we have a little, uh, so, so just making sure that, that uh, we, that those that are within our uh, priorities, uh, we're, we have a voice there, I think that is important. With the students, I think that it's still the theory, and they're just very, very clear and transparent too, that uh, kind of, after the town hall, there was a, a, a kind of a briefing and next steps. Uh, since they were working with the PT, PTSA, um, I was, uh, we met together online uh, with the students who participated in, in the town hall on what they wanted to do, so that being said, uh, I, uh, I was, I am still making it very clear that um, it's your adventure, and I'm here to support this, you tell me what you want, and as a legislative rep, will support you on that to make sure that you get the most out of what you wanna uh, uh, get out of here. Uh, and, and I heard that you wanted to be part of the, maybe looking at, at the laws and what testimonies, and you will be working also with the PTA in the law thing, so you uh, just say that you should do, but you can also share that, what happened at your meeting, I know that is uh, uh, something worth sharing. If that's, you're willing to share that for you.
Yes, um, we are planning a meeting with the students tomorrow to discuss more. Currently, our ideas from what we've met in the past are um, organizing Student Voices for Focus Day, which is um, a PTA organized like event in Olympia in February. Um, and then we also are working on gathering students for having, like, doing online testimonies, or to person ones, um, for the various bills. Uh, yeah, more.
You also talked about meeting with legislators and doing that sort of thing.
So my job is, is what, that's what they wanna do, so my job as support them will see, is to see, make sure that what is going to be for you, and, and send them like, this is what it is, and you decide what, like, it is, and the same with the other students. I think that, that uh, one is the job that Joanie and I do, and then the other, I think that if you want other opportunities. I think that that uh one is the job that Joanie and I do and then the other, I think that if you want another opportunity, I am. Uh to support, but nothing more than that. Uh uh unless. I think that and and the same with the other thing, but that we are a team too. So so uh there's always. Uh they we have also people that are have maybe in the board a lot longer, so they might have some. Some uh expertise there, some tools, but uh take advantage of that. Um but it's yours, I will say that hundred percent. Um but that being said is is I will send that and I hope that we can kind of make that quick. I think that during the WASA um. Um conference this weekend, uh they gave like an advocacy planning template of what our next action. Uh they said like, well, just talk to and look at the committees and when I was looking at the committee, it's like it's already started. This is a uh. It's it's a five K. Uh it will, once it goes to the floor, I think it also matters that we call and that's when we have an email. But I think that the testimony is next one. And that's when we need to hear the voices of of the community. On how does it look, anything that they they give up within their deals. Uh I I will say that that I there was one.
Can I just add something? Yes. Um and then, of course, the interesting aspect of this for um Mercer Island advocacy is that uh our own Thomason. Is going into the cabinet of our new governor. So the new legislator for the forty-first district will be appointed on the twenty-eighth.
Um yes, and uh I will say, I think that it is, this one is. Uh just just because it is part of our work, uh that is um. From uh this bill that it has been introduced and put into committee already and already had hearings. It was up today, it was uh regarding changing the the boarding uh percentage for bonds to fifty-five. So I don't know if they will have a second hearing or not. Some committees do have that. So I think that that's something that that um. We will have just get that as part of the monitoring and seeing what happens. Uh but it's it's just saying, uh it goes within the work that we have been doing about the bond. So uh so it's as it is. They are maybe two uh hundred, so that's the one that that is is related to the bond. But I will anyway email it to the board to see, uh so you can um. Yeah, it is. Uh there's a lot, so. That's my my report, so.
And you have the other half. I um and that would be very funny. I mean, like, just as a as a port, we already talked about the SAT, which is the thing I was gonna talk about. Doing my board report, maybe the thing is that with the high school pack, um heard from uh Becky Petler. Who was doing the sort of a study with the high school. I think you guys talked about meeting with the students maybe, but. She had met with the the parent association committee as well um at the high school about this sort of uh how they're doing on. Forgot my like hour four bring uh. Test it. I mean, great, great, there you go. I knew there was some good work. And um and also the high school uh. Showed the parent group, the uh sort of like early proposed change to the bell schedule, I guess, for districts. And they're ranging to make it more effective for students. Um we got some feedback on that. Okay, that's all I have for the. Uh Deborah.
Um I was at the uh.
Oh, come to home. It's ready to take out the oven.
Uh IMS pack meeting uh this week and um not surprisingly, a lot of the conversation had to do with. Uh families on at the middle school and then the reaction from it and and um. You know, I mean, I think it's, I think it's been conversations from everybody. Um I what what really impacted me is is. Mary Jo told the group that it was one of the hardest weeks she's had as an educator in twenty-two years. And um. That that made me really sad because it's it's wasn't, it wasn't just what happened and the fear. Um and the anger of students, it's also um consistently being told that uh the middle school's a mess. And and you're failing our kids. Um and I just don't feel like, um it makes me really sad that the middle school, which is a phenomenal place to be. Um for our students and I am a nurse staff, um and speak for them, but for our students, um it's such a caring, warm place. Where, you know, we joke around or they come in and they're just coddled to death at sixth grade in sixth grade and then, you know, hopefully. Move them along towards independence, ready to take on the high school. And we have such an amazing um administration there and um. Which I have always called the dream team. I said that then too. Um and uh then to get just. Just this constant criticism when when uh the middle school was was a victim of a crime. Um regardless of what crime it might be, but but were the victims. There's others too. I'm not discounting everyone's victimhood, but I'm. Not mocking that, I'm just saying like there were lots of people impacted by this, including our staff. Uh who, you know, came back early from break to work on how to how to help students and then, uh you know, basically it consumed the week. On top of teaching our kids. Um and so I just wanted to express my gratitude to um the staff. Um in particular, Erin and Mary Jo um for for leading our our students through that. Um and and then also to Fred, who I think has handled this um with grace and courage. Um and uh it's, you know, there's no, there's no rulebook on how to handle. Um victimization, their PTSD exists for a reason. Um and uh you know, I think that we just, you know, need to come together and support each other without talking about. Um you know, like blaming loyal fires on people. Like it it's astonishing to me. To me, it's the same kind of thing, like. Life happens, um but but really what shows character is is what we do from there. And and the character that I've seen in our district's leadership is uh makes me really proud. So thank you. Um and uh as part of that, one of the feedback that I've heard of a lot, I know how strongly our. Students were supported. Um I I've heard from some parents the last uh. Wanting more transparency in terms of what's actually happening in the schools. Um and then also is, you know, what else can we be doing? So, you know, I I've talked about it with Fred earlier today and I just wanted to throw to the board and I don't. Not intending to start a discussion now, but just, you know, and and talking individually to other people, just um. You know, what can we be doing? And are we missing an opportunity by by really starting to talk about. These um instances in more detail uh in middle school? Like, are we missing an opportunity in elementary school? And and then Maggie Time, now we're talking, you know, what's happening with? Like this, I know there's a second step curriculum. I know we talked about empathy. Um I know we talked about. I'm gonna miss all the, you know, words and mindfulness and all that. But are we missing an opportunity to really start teaching about hate without being specific and being very age appropriate? And does our curriculum cover that? And so um I would just, um I I think. Um I would love to have a conversation at some point is um are there areas in our elementary. Um curriculum that could benefit from a look and just make sure that we're really. Um setting our kids up, um you know, kind of sort of running around like. We know they lose their brains in sixth grade because then they um, you know, they're testing out all their independence and boundaries. And and what foundations do we want to pack in there before? And and are we taking advantage of every opportunity that we can be? So I would love to have a conversation at some point. Um or however it's handled, it doesn't have to be a board conversation. It could be learning services or whatever. I just, I just want to make sure that we're addressing this. I'm really, really worried about the next couple of years and our students' um well-being. Our our community doesn't always lead with great example in terms of um treating each other with respect. And focusing on issues rather than cutting people down. Um and so I would just love to. Be a little bit more proactive as as I'm anticipating we're gonna be kind of falling off the cliff and soon.
A hundred percent, just.
Just that, just I, you know, ideas. I don't have a set anything in mind. I just want to make sure that we're able to um. Have a strong impact on our students and families as possible. The younger we get on, the more impact on families we can have. So that's it.
I'm gonna go next, just to say like a hundred percent what Deborah just said. Much gratitude to the middle school administration and teachers and staff for how they handled this week and to you, Fred. Um I also would love to at some point, once programmed, like as part of maybe hearing about like. You know, are diversity fundamental or whatever, like if there's some way to to hear just a little bit about. What, if anything, is happening at the elementary school level. I know that. Fine, we joined the district halfway through third grade and my kids were hearing racist jokes on the school bus at fourth grade when they started taking the bus. And I was I'm horrified because that was their first time encountering something like that because we'd hit nothing up in. In the US until that point. Um and uh I'm I'm. Hurt to hear that there is a new place for hate. We're starting up again at the middle school. I know it's been hard to keep that going since there's, you know, kids turnover after three years and so forth. But I know that there is an elementary school level one, which is a like a uh community. It's not like a thing that it's not a curriculum. I don't think the teachers teach. I think it's like a like a social group kind of thing. But anyway, I'd love to learn more about what kinds of things there are. That's all. Um I attended the uh PTA DEI committee meeting last week. This is what we were talking about as well, if people concerned about the next few years, maybe like for for kids. So especially kids from Marshall West Coast.
I attended the PTA council meeting last week and I cannot remember what the.
Um we certainly talked about um this this issue. We talked about the bond um and then. You know, I think PTA has already started in their process of nomination committee, hard to believe, but they're certainly talking about nomination committee at some of those things. Yeah, um so I guess my also I'll I'll end with the really from my report on actually an optimistic now. And that's um I think people can be surprised, coalitions can be surprising. Um I would look to the recently announced peace deal in the Middle East and how that came into being. And I mean, we'll see how that pans out over the next forty-two days, but I think surprising and an interesting coalition of interest that. Hopefully has resulted and will result in a lasting peace. Um also surprising, quite pleasantly, that is governor's Governor Ferguson's inauguration address, in my opinion. I thought it was excellent. Thought it highlighted um and hit a lot of keynotes. In particular, as it pertains to public education. He cited a bill that Representative Reed from Seattle has introduced on extending guaranteed admissions program for those students that have a three-point O or better. I know that people may be aware that over the last year, I've been very interested in this. Um I've mentioned it as a possible legislative priority in the spring. Um we did not adopt it at the time. I think we might want to consider um relooking at it so that when. I at least individually plan on advocating for it, um but it would be great if the board also adopts it as a position. So that in my individual advocacy, I can say it's also a board position. Um and there's some opportunities, I think, to shape it as well, um to extend it to more institutions. I think some of the data sharing provisions in it are very good and it was mentioned in Governor Ferguson's inauguration address. So I would encourage everyone to read it. Uh it's excellent. I mean, you got your own conclusions and. Uh you know, maybe people surprise you and coalitions will surprise you and uh progress can happen.
Do you have anything else, Christian?
I mentioned my agenda already, so it's.
Okay. Do you have a question to adjourn?
So move.
How long is paper adjourned to the act?
Hi.
Word numbers. Two zero five zero.